All right, we're going to call to order the June 1st meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment Agency and the West Sacramento Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight as we do each week with the Pledge of Allegiance. We'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight will be led by one of our Planning Commissioners, Bab Sandin.
(Inaudible)
All right, the council did not meet in closed session this evening, so we're going to proceed directly to our General Administration Agenda Item 1A, which is Presentations by the Public on Matters, not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the City Council. As is noted on our agenda, we're prohibited by state law from taking up items that are brought up under Item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on Item 1A or any other agenda item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available at the door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to assure that everyone has the chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited in no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, which indicates which agenda item we are on at any particular moment. We do recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can involve some anxiety and exacerbate their allergies, so we do ask there not be any boos or cat calls or applause or other demonstrations, and we maintain a civil discourse in the chambers. For each of the agenda items, following Item 1A, 1B, and 1C, we'll take -- excuse me, we take the yellow comment cards up until the conclusion of the staff report. Once the council questions and discussion and the public testimony have begun, we don't take any additional cards. So if you have an intention of speaking on one of the items that's on the council's agenda this evening, please, our request is that you turn in the yellow card as soon as possible, but no later than the conclusion of the staff report. With that, we have no items, no requests under Item 1A, is that right, Madam Clerk? All right, then we'll proceed to Item 1B, just council communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? I would just -- let me report on what's going on with the "Here We Stay" regional coalition that Mayor Johnson convened that he announced yesterday, and I was at the press conference, but the mayor announced the convening of a 60-member, roughly 60-member coalition to work on financing alternatives for sports and entertainment facility to replace the existing Power Balance Arena. We talked about this with council briefly before. The mayor announced the -- Mayor Johnson announced that Senator Steinberg and Senator Gaines would co-chair that task force and that we'd begin its work within the next two weeks. Chris LaHaine, who was, I believe, the director for the study group that the City of Sacramento had on the arena, is also going to be the executive director of this group. Although I was at the press conference, and I've been talking about it in the media, the mayor, Mayor Johnson and the rest of the team, the rest of the coalition's not yet been named, but we expect that to happen by the end of this week, and they'll be meeting within the next couple of weeks. We don't know, although that's the basic scope and charge of this group, the specifics of the agenda and the particular tasks and what have you have not yet been identified. So, as I say, it hasn't been announced. I expect it's likely that I'll be asked to join that group, and if that occurs, then I'll bring back to the council the agenda and other items that are pending before. All right, Item 1C is appointments to boards and commissions, and we have none this evening, so we're going to proceed to Item 2, which is Presentation of Proclamations Recognizing the Brighton-Broderick Community Action Network and the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints for Organizing the Mormon Helping Hands Service Project here in West Sacramento. Let me first ask if there's a motion on the proclamations.
Aye.
Given by Mr. Johansson and seconded by Mr. Kristof. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing that motion carries, and the proclamations are adopted. We have a couple of guests that we're going to invite to the podium, and then we'll make presentations of our proclamations. We have cameras on all sides of the rooms, but this is an old tradition from when we only had one camera serving the city council, that we asked all of our guests when we were doing presentations to face the audience and not the city council. So let me first make the presentation of the proclamation in appreciation of the efforts of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, which is one of the lead organizers of this really tremendous event that occurred in our community on April 30th. And as you can see, this is a small, a small group of the many, many people who helped make this effort come together. So, this is a proclamation of the city council in appreciation of the efforts of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints in support of Mormon Helping Hands Day, April 30th, 2011. Whereas as part of the annual statewide Mormon Helping Hands Day, April 30th, 2011, the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints performed renovation and repair improvements at West Sacramento Parks in association with the City of West Sacramento. And whereas three park locations were selected for rejuvenation, Alice Norman Park, Bright Park, and Riverwalk Park. And whereas the park sites collectively received 1,750 new trees and plants, 150 yards of mulch, 125 gallons of paint, the cleanup of 100 acres of parklands, re-irrigation of planters, new sign banners, rebuilt fences, renovation of two Little League fields with installation of scorekeeper platforms, renovation of one basketball court, and installation of fountains, benches, and picnic tables. And whereas the church organized 1,200 church members and citizen volunteers participating in the parks improvement project, one of the largest volunteer events in West Sacramento history. And whereas the project rallied the church and the community together to complete the parks improvements valued in excess of $100,000, assisted by materials and monetary donations from local businesses. And whereas the entire project represents a significant contribution to the quality and future enjoyment of West Sacramento's parks. Now therefore be proclaimed that the city council of the City of West Sacramento does hereby express appreciation to the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints for its efforts of April 30th, 2011, to make Mormon Helping Hands Day a valuable contribution to the West Sacramento community. Thank you. On behalf of the city council but the entire community, I want to express our appreciation to the church, to the leadership, to all of the volunteers and participants in this really tremendous effort that made a huge difference in our community. Thank you very much. (Applause) For rebuttal, okay. No, I wanted to just say my appreciation on behalf of the Sacramento State. I'm John Casaneta, I'm the president of the Sacramento State. We have a number of our scouts here. We have, to my right, are the young men who participated in eight separate Eagle Scout projects that were completed as part of the Mormon Helping Hands Day, and we're very proud of them, and we see a number of our Cub Scouts out in the audience too, and glad they could be with us, and they can look to the examples of these young men in fulfilling a great project on this particular day. I also want to express our appreciation on behalf of your community also, the people who worked with us. It was like a perfect storm of bringing people together to do something really fantastic, and we absolutely could not have done it without the support and help of leaders in the community and your entire community as well. So, just thank you very much for giving us the opportunity and for supporting us. Thank you. (Applause) I also have for you, Mayor, a picture of the, that we brought with us, a community day of service. It's a picture that has the very handsome mugs of a number of the key leaders from our organization who made this event possible. Our Eagle Scouts also have a DVD that they would like to present to each of the council members and yourself, and a thank you card to each of you if they may approach the bench and present over to the side. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Job well done.
Hey, thank you very much. Thanks for your service.
Thank you very much. Job well done.
Now, second, we'd like to present a proclamation to one of the key partners that made this event possible in conjunction with the church, and so we're very proud to present this proclamation in appreciation of the assistance of the Brighton-Broderick Community Action Network on Mormon Helping Hands Day, April 30th, 2011. People smile. I know, but you're getting a proclamation, it should be, it should be easy one. There's folks in here who later on have to ask us to raise fees on water and sewer services. They should be nervous, you should be smiling. Whereas as part of the statewide Mormon Helping Hands Day, April 30th, 2011, the Brighton-Broderick Community Action Network, BBCAN, helped to recruit valuable community volunteers for improvement project, improvement projects at West Sacramento Parks in association with the City of West Sacramento and the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. And whereas three park locations were selected for rejuvenation, Alice Norman Park, Bright Park, and Riverwalk Park, and the park sites received a whole lot of stuff, which I won't say again because I said it for the last proclamation. But whereas BBCAN was responsible for attracting citizen volunteers in the park improvement projects, one of the largest organized volunteer events in West Sacramento history. And whereas BBCAN participated in the selection of project sites and specific improvement tasks in their successful completion. And whereas the entire project represents a significant contribution to the quality and future enjoyment of West Sacramento's parks, now therefore be proclaimed that the city council of the City of West Sacramento does hereby express its appreciation to the Brighton-Broderick Community Action Network for its efforts of April 30th, 2011, to make Mormon Helping Hands Day a valuable contribution to the West Sacramento community. Congratulations, and thank you.[862.62][862.62](Applause) Is that your hand? Would you like to say a word, Mr. Viegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the entire community, thank you guys very much. You guys came out a couple of months ago and kind of laid out your plan and what you wanted to do, and I think that kind of generated some interest by other folks, and as you said earlier this evening, you know, everybody coming together can really make a huge difference in our community, and I know that when you get youth involved and they get to get involved and feel good community projects, it's good for everybody. So thanks again for all of your wonderful work, it looks real nice.
Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, just a quick, I know a lot has been said about the volunteerism spirit that this generated in West Sacramento, and how good an example was that, but I just wanted to comment on the organization of this particular event and how well-moved it was. It was totally, from the inception of the project to the end of the project, it just ran like clockwork. You know, you had 800-some-odd people out at this event, that was a huge undertaking, you did a lot of really good things, but you know, that's a lot of discipline, it's a lot of people listening to instructions, it's a lot of people managing it well. So I really appreciate that, and really appreciate what work you were able to do and the inspiration you were able to bring to our city.
Mr. Kristof.
Yeah, I too would just echo the comments of my fellow council members, I'd just like to thank all of you for your participation, and I know it's not just all of you that are here tonight, there have been many other people that came and volunteered, and this is something that is really, really good for the community, and it really helps as far as putting all parts of our community together. And when we bring everybody together in that manner, there's really not a lot that can't be accomplished. Anything and everything can be accomplished, and for that, we really, really appreciate.
Mr. Ledesma.
Just want to say thank you as well to everybody for going out that day and serving our community. We really appreciate it. I know it turned into a real day of service from your organizations, from the community that came out and helped, and then there was another group that was actually doing some work as well. So it was one of the biggest, I guess the mayor said, one of the biggest volunteer days that the city's probably ever seen. So, just to thank you for that and for coming out tonight, appreciate that and the great signs you brought out, so thank you.
So thank you. We keep going on with our business, but you should not feel any compunction if you want to get up and leave. It won't actually be interesting at all until about an hour and a half from now, so. If there's no objection, I didn't neglect one of the reports under 1B that is not trivial, so I'd like to return to Item 1B, council communications. The Delta Protection Commission met last week in Cortland, and all of us were present for the first time in five years, in part because the new executive director of the commission, Mike Machado, had prepared a proposal to, for us to send to the Delta Stewardship Council outlining how the Delta Protection Commission might play a more active role in both the appeals process of covered actions under the Delta Stewardship Council, and also as the Delta Regionwide Flood Agency. And so they sent a draft concept paper out to us, two days, three days before the commission meeting, that outlined these concepts that Mr. Machado indicated he had drafted based on our prior meeting and on the direction of the stewardship council. The commission unanimously rejected the proposal for a couple of reasons. There is interest in, in many of the Delta communities in having a more coherent strategy around flood issues, mainly, I should say, around flood fighting as opposed to around levees and flood improvements, but including those as well. But there is definitely a concern from several of the counties and reclamation districts, and Yolo is one of them, that if there actually, if there were a levee emergency and a levee breach, that they don't, they simply don't have the resources all alone to be able to respond effectively, and there needs to be a more coordinated regional approach in that regard. And so we've talked a lot about emergency response in the past. The main concern I had about the issue was twofold. One was using the commission for the prioritization of flood protection projects. You know, the commission's not designed for that, it's not, we don't have weighted voting at the commission, and so, you know, the reclamation district folks who represent six people and a whole lot of grapes have the same vote that I have for the 50,000 people that we're trying to protect, and I actually represent the cities of Sacramento and Ileton on the commission as well. So it's just not, it's not, you know, it was never designed to be able to make those kind of choices, and it could put us in a very disadvantaged position. And then second, just having another agency declare itself to be in charge of flood protection and priority setting and reviewing projects, no matter, even if that agency was super effective, adding that on top of the Central Valley Flood Protection Board and the Delta Stewardship Council and all the agencies that existed before three years ago when those two were created, would be a nightmare and could potentially jeopardize the pace and the progress on our own projects. And so, that was our, that was my specific objection on that piece. The second is that I did not want to see the Delta Protection Commission, Mr. Machado's notion is that the commission could help the Delta Stewardship Council by essentially filtering some of the appeals of covered actions first. But all that does, from my perspective, is create yet another, yet one more level of uncertainty and delay and cost for, for projects, and since the stewardship council has not pulled back from the notion that, you know, their reign, what they mean by covered actions is, like, covers everything, that would be a dangerous outcome. So the rest of the commission did agree, it will come back, I think Mr. Machado is, has a particular set of objectives that may not precisely align with ours on these issues, so it's going, it will probably return, but it is, it's an important issue, but it was, it was encouraging to see that the rest of the commission, at least at this stage, agreed that this was, this was going way too far in terms of making the Delta Protection Commission into some sort of, yet another super agency that we don't need, so. Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda, which is Items 3 through 8. Are there items on consent that any member of the council wishes to remove, or any item for separate question? I have 3 and 4. Separate questions? Okay. So, Item 3, and these are related items. Item 3 is approval of reimbursement agreement between the city and Smart Growth Investors to LLC for garden park improvements and land, and irrevocable offer of dedication. So, and let me read Item 4 while we're at it, which is consideration of resolutions 11-36 authorizing application for statewide park development grant funds for Garden Park Riverwalk Plaza. Just, so the interaction of these two items, if we were to get the grant under item, that we would be applying for under Item 4, that would free up money in the infill infrastructure grant that we already have for other, for other priority purposes?
The way we're structuring the grant application, the money that is dedicated to Garden Park would actually stay with Garden Park, the grant would fund the plaza and the additional improvements. So, the reason they're packaged together for the grant application is for competitive, competitiveness purposes. Garden Park, considering it all as one project, has some elements of design that are incomplete, has existing funding, so we're really positioning it that way to make the grant application competitive.
Okay, then, the, on the, on Exhibit C to the main item, the summary of substantive procedural, and procedural requirements for obtaining reimbursement, the, I was interested in the timeframe that we're looking at for this, for the completion of the park. It's not entirely clear, because the deadlines that are on page 11 are, some of them are, the date for acceptance of the park is honor before March 30th, 2011. And, so the developer would commence construction by July, target date of completion is November 15th, but acceptance on March 30th, is that, is this a typo, is it March 30th, 2012?
As of now.
Okay, so the, the timeframe that would be required under this whole process would be essentially immediate?
Yes, as soon as the streets are undergrind.
Okay, and so, and not dependent on the grant in Item 4 for the reasons that Aaron just?
No, this actually is an expansion of Garden Park Down Universal Street. I don't, if you recall from the specific plan, that's really the concept of it, it's an expansion of the park and of their universal street, and it's adding amenities to the Riverwalk. That's the new grant that we're thinking about.
And have we already, just as a, as a governance process issue, have we determined at some point that we would be delegating, and we may have done this once, once or twice before, but delegating final approval, that is, non-applicable final authorization to make a decision to the Arts Commission? Is that, is that, is that emerged, is that sort of evolved as a policy in the administrative manual? So, in this, and under this agreement, the project is essentially managed by the developer until it's completed and turned over to us, but the, the public art component, the developer would select a handful of potential pieces for installation, and then those would be presented to the Arts Commission for final option selection?
For the public art, we have done that in the past, in some instances, where the Arts Commission has made a selection for inclusion in another project. They don't have authority over the park, per se, but for the public art, they have. If the council wanted the public art to come before them, they could, they could request that.
Oh, I, I, no, I don't, I'm not asking for that. I, I don't want to have the public art. It's just, as we, the, the commissions that we have, other than the planning commission, are principally advisory in nature, and so to the extent the commissions at some point take on final decision-making authority, that ought to be a conscious decision that the council has made as a policy matter. You know, ethics requirements and what have you start to change when the commissions have actual authority and their decisions are not merely advisory to the council, and so I just, I know we have done this a couple of times, but it seems like it's sort of been a one-off, but if it's a policy, a policy choice, that's what I'm just trying to highlight, that's, if it has become one, sort of de facto.
I'm not sure that it is. I think we've identified that smaller pieces probably would get done that way, larger pieces perhaps, no?
All right, those are the only questions I had, thanks. All right, and those were the only questions we identified, so is there a motion on the consent agenda? Been moved by Mr. Viegas?
Aye.
Seconded by Mr. Ledesma. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing that motion carries, consent agenda is adopted. Item 9 is a public hearing in consideration of resolution 11-26 increasing water, sewer, and refuse collection service rates. Evening, Mayor, and members of the council.
I'll try and keep this as brief as possible before we can open the public hearing. As you recall, on March 16th, we did a public workshop on the water, sewer, and refuse utilities and the need for revision to the rate structure. Some of the highlights from that meeting were the major drivers for the need to review the rates was primarily the downturn in the economy and the lack of development. Also, keeping capital to that necessary for each of the utilities, and also maintaining reserves were kind of the major components that factored into the proposed rates. At that meeting, council gave direction to proceed with the options presented for the water, sewer, and refuse. There is a typo in the agenda, and we did proceed with the direction that council gave with option 2 for the refuse rates, and those are the ones that were noticed in the public hearing as well as are presented tonight with the resolution. Also at that meeting, council gave direction to proceed with Proposition 218 requirements for public notification. Those requirements have been completed, and we are now returning to you tonight for the public hearing for those rates. During the Proposition 218 notice and timeframe, we did receive about a dozen or so phone calls from folks in the community regarding the proposed rates. Primarily those calls were with regards to the notice and asking for clarification and understanding the notice. And to date, we have received, as of today, eight written protests. None of the protests appear to be substantive in nature, and none offering the alternative to the proposal whatsoever. Pretty much all I had on that. If you have any questions now, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, then I have a public hearing, and I'll be happy to answer questions following the public hearing.
All right, are there any questions at this time? Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, just, I think this looks good. The, on Table 17, I'm looking at the utility survey, and this is, I think, one of the things that, you know, a lot of people will look at in terms of how competitive we are with the cost of doing business in West Sacramento is. And according to this, effective July 2013, it looks like West Sacramento would still be the second lowest in the area.
Correct.
But there's an article on NPR this morning, Roseville is now raising theirs to 84, so we would be actually the cheapest in the area.
If that is the case, in fact the case, then we would be the cheapest. If that is the case, in fact, the case, then we would be the cheapest.
Okay. And so this utility service, surveys really, is that a consolid, is that a consolidation of commercial and residential?
No, the utility survey is strictly for the residential.
Strictly for residential.
There are way too many categories of commercial accounts to have some kind of meaningful comparison.
That, that's another issue that I think the, you know, a lot of businesses would like to locate to West Sacramento, we're doing business here. Is that comparison available or?
Um, it can't, certainly it's available. The information is public. We didn't do a comprehensive survey on all of the commercial accounts. If you look at the attachments, exhibit A to the resolution, the number of commercial accounts for refuse, for example, is 20 to 30. Water, again, 20 to 30. So trying to compare apples to apples with all of the communities in the region becomes very difficult. All right. Thanks. Other questions at this time? All right. Seeing none, we're going to open the public hearing then. Item nine. We don't have any requests to speak to because it is a public hearing. Let me ask, does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Forward.
I'm a person that resides at El Rancho Mobile Park. So, although bored, I guess I don't know what to say. But anyhow, I'm kind of new to this. But as to this notice of public hearing, as far as I know, there were maybe five people in El Rancho Park that received this notice. And, and you're saying you're going to raise the rates. You know, there's a lot of retired people here in West Sacramento. They make their homes in the mobile parks. And I don't know if you're aware of it, but the mobile parks are starting to raise their rates. So everybody's starting to raise everything. And you know, if, if Roseville people all jumped off into the cliff, would West Sacramento have to jump off into the cliff? Because you got to remember, Roseville has a lot of money. Sacramento does not have a lot of money. We're a lot of poor retired people. And if you keep raising our rates constantly, I mean, the mobile parks are raising it, you guys are raising it, the groceries are going up, the gas is going up, except now it came down about five cents. But you know what I mean? I'm just a one lonely person here. And I asked people if they were coming to this and they go, well, no, we never received it. So that's why you probably only got eight people responding to this. So you know, enough is enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council in the public hearing? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing. Mr. Pavin?
Counsel, we would be prohibited from adopting the proposed rates if we receive protests that 50% greater of the population of the residents, property owners. Since it had not happened, then staff would recommend that we adopt the rates as proposed in the staff report, specifically the rates on exhibit A to the resolution.
Mr. Villegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. One, I just want to kind of reiterate, you know, one of the policies that we've had, the practice that we've had, at least since I've been on the council, is to methodically go through to make sure that as we increase our rates, that we're not, you know, increasing them by huge dollar amounts where folks can't afford it. That we try to do very small, very methodical, very careful incremental increases so that they're not, you know, seven, eight dollars at a time, so that folks who can't afford it to begin with are hit with that larger bill each month. So we try to incrementally go through and, or carefully go through and methodically plan as we, you know, 45 cents, 75 cents, 95 cents every few years so that we, we get to where we need to be so that we can continue to provide a good quality service. And nobody wants to raise the rates. It's just the cost of doing business continues to go up. Unfortunately for folks at home, they probably don't have this sheet. So Greg, can you kind of just quickly summarize kind of what, where, where they're at and where they're going to? Because I think it's important because I think what council member Johansson alluded to earlier is that if you look at at least a dozen different cities or municipalities throughout the region, we continue to be, you know, very competitive, if not the most, the lowest rate for utilities in this entire region by a significant amount, which I think is an accomplishment. I think it's a testament to what we've been doing for years here, and that is to provide good quality and efficient and cost, you know, cost-effective services. So for folks at home who don't have this, can you just kind of briefly explain kind of what, what we're, what we're proposing to do here?
Well, I think you pointed out a very important fact, and that is currently we are basically sort of a second lowest in the region. Even after these five years of rate implementation is proposed, we don't change our ranking. And in fact, if others are raising their rates, we might even improve our rankings. So in terms of being competitive in the region, we remain very competitive. Prior to bringing these rates forward, for the last couple of years, we've been looking continually to reduce costs. And for the last couple of years, we've been able to reduce and make concessions up to about $1.7 million. That was before we even looked at coming forward with any type of proposed rate increase. And then we also looked at our reserves that we had in each of the funds. And we balance those reserves, or cash, excuse me, cash balance with needed reserves in case something happens. And as well as the necessary capital projects that we required over the next two to five years. And we programmed only the capital that would be absolutely necessary to maintain our, our infrastructure. And we also used available cash balance down to where we just maintain our required reserves. And so we've done everything that we can to use existing funds and not, you know, come before you with two or three dollar increases. And we feel we've done a very modest, proposing very modest increases just to maintain our current, current operation and our current infrastructure.
That's not?
Yes. I just wanted to, when you say modest, I think Mr. Villegas's point is some people aren't looking at the grid as we are. Maybe just outline what those rate increases are. And I hate to kind of be asked to be specific, but I think there is absolutely a need to understand. We're not talking about dollars, but we are talking, what are we talking about and what time periods? So if you can, I'm not sure if we can even put the grid on this screen to people at home. I'd see.
I, it would be, it would take me forever to go through all of the individual.
I would agree.
But if you would allow, I would go through the, through the residential rates.
Thank you.
So for this coming fiscal year, again, this is a sort of a five-year plan. This coming fiscal year, there is no proposed rate increase for the sewer utility. In fact, there's no proposed increase for sewer until fiscal year 13, 14. There already is a scheduled increase based on previous council action a few years ago for sewer this July at 30 cents. But this action is not requesting any sewer increase for approximately two years. For in the water, we're recommending a increase for the commercial accounts in year one this July, but not for the residential until year, until year two, which would be fiscal year 12, 15. And that would be 45 cents per year for addition to the year. I should back up on the, on the sewer. It's, in year three, it's 95 cents. Year four, it's a dollar nine. And year five, it's a dollar 15. Refuse, we have relatively healthy cash balance that we're able to utilize for the next few years or so. And then we have increases recommended in years four and five of 95 cents and 99 cents respectively. Typical business.
I brought in Villegas.
I mean, Mayor Kristoff, sorry.
Yeah. You know, just, just answer the question. It's, I mean, everybody on the council, we hate raising rates. We really do. It is just, it's just a necessity of business. The city council acts as a, as a business entity and, you know, every business, you're right, every business is raising fees, rates or whatever. And, but I think that Greg makes a very interesting point because we know we need a certain amount of money four or five years out. But what, as Mr. Villegas had indicated, what, what we try to do is we tried to spread that out in short increments over, over a year. And I'll give you a good example, and Greg just alluded to it a minute ago, and that's water. We need about a dollar 80 before the next five, within the next five years. So what we've decided to do was in this fiscal year, we're not going to raise water, the water portion of that at all. And so in, in 12 and 13, it'll go to 45 cents more. And then in 13 and 14, it goes another 45 cents. So we're trying to incrementally increase the rate, but not have the whole dollar 80 hit anybody at any one particular time. And the same thing, sort of thing goes for sewer and, and so forth. I, I think it is a, it's a good system and I wish we didn't have to raise rates. But, you know, our electrical bill goes up, our gas bill goes up to fuel the trucks and do the things that we need to do. And this is an enterprise fund and it has to have a certain amount of money in it to pay off whatever is necessary to pay off within that particular fund. So I, I just hope that you, you get a little feel and a little understanding. I, I'm a little concerned that not everybody within the trailer parks didn't receive, receive a notice. I mean, I wish that everybody had gotten the notice. I know that I got two of them. And I, I, I know my neighbors got them because we sit out in the front yard and we talked about, because first thing they do is they come knocking on my door and, Billy, why are you raising the rates? You know? And I said, oh, hold on, we, we need to talk about it. So then, you know, I, I broke this out and I showed them how we try to spread it out. And I showed them that, you know, the, the first increase for in 2011, 12, I mean, 12, 13, it's going to be 45 cents. And they go, oh, it's only 45 cents? And I says, yeah, it's 45 cents. But you got to remember now that 45 cents is going to stay and then there's going to be another 45 cents after that. So that's, then you get to 90 cents. But they're looking, they looked at it also like, once you explain it that way, they said, well, you know, I think I can, I can afford that because I'm retired and a lot of my neighbors are retired. And so it, I think it's something that is, this is something that I can support and it's something that I think is fairly fair. So I just hope that that helps explain a little bit of it. I mean, I know that when you write a check for, I don't care if it's 20 cents more, 50 cents more, a dollar more, you know, you get a little mad at it. But, you know, hey, it is what it is. So we certainly try to keep those fees and rates and things down. And, and staff's working very hard to try to find every single penny that they can in order to, to make sure that they don't have to add to the rates. So, thank you.
But that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to maybe dovetail off of what my colleague, Mr. Kristoff, said. And, you know, again, just to reiterate, we don't like, my first, one of our first actions here is to start looking at raising these rates. And it's, it wasn't probably the first thing you want to do, but we certainly understand the environment we're in. And the truth is that we've learned through this process is, yes, the infrastructure that we've, we've put in place, we need to continue to make sure we fund, fund the necessary revenue to pay for it. And that's what this is about. I wanted to, love or something Mr. Kristoff said too, which is the staff's job on this. And, you know, I know you've been out talking about this for some time. I think I attended a business chamber meeting, I think you folks went to, to start outlining these costs. And that was a few months ago, I think, back in January or February. So this has been underway for some time. And, and so while I take no pleasure in saying we're going to increase rates, because it does have an effect on people, on retirees, on young families, especially those that may have lost an income, it matters. But I appreciate the approach we've taken because I know you've exhausted all opportunities to, to find other ways to get to this, to the, to the needed revenue that we need to cover our costs. I know you've been doing it at some time and you gave us some valid approaches to how to go about it. And so I am, if we're going to do this, I'm, I'm proud of the way we went about it and incorporating our thoughts and kind of spreading it out over the four or five-year period. I think that will have the most opportunity. So hopefully the economy comes back by 2013, 2014. Incomes will go up and we'll, we'll be able to catch up with the rate increases. So anyway, thank you.
No comments? I mean, I think it's been well said by the council. And I mean, one of the, I mean, to bring this together, one of the reasons that we pay close attention to the, our relative position to other communities is really to make sure that we are containing costs to the maximum extent possible. It's not, we can't really say we just want to have the cheapest water rates or sewer rates in the region and just do it for all the reasons that Mr. Kristoff said. But we do. I mean, our, our total rates now with the Roseville action will be the lowest in the region. And all that mean, and, and we're not, our residents and businesses don't generally produce that much less trash than everyone else in the region. We don't drink that much less water. We don't flush that much less than everyone else in the region. So that means that, you know, that's an indicator that we're, that we're, we're doing a decent job on efficiency relative to benchmarks across the rest of the region, which is the best that we can do. And so I think, you know, the, the comparison that shows us in virtually every category is being at the, at the bottom. And, and that gap's going to grow because there are a lot of other communities, you know, Davis has lower water rates than us, even though their sewer, I'm sorry, they have lower sewer rates than us. That's going to last for about five more seconds. And then their sewer rates are going to double or triple. So this, this chart is going to become even more severe, whereas our, although our rates may, will increase in some of these categories by, you know, as much as 45 or 95 cents per year for a couple of years, relative to what's going on in a lot of other communities. Because of all those cost increases and the new environmental rules and everything, I think this approach of making steady, slow investments in the, in the system and paying a lot of attention to efficiency is, is really serving our residents and our businesses as well. So I'm supportive of this measured approach. Right. Mr. Ledesma, are you ready for a motion?
I will make a motion for the recommended action. We thought resolution 11 dash 26.
All right. It's been moved and, moved and seconded. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, turning none. Motion carries unanimously. Item 10 is a public hearing in report of measure K revenue and disbursements. Mr. Sharma?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Niteesh Sharma with City Finance Department. One of the requirements of measure K is that the city will annually publish a report to the community following a public hearing. In your packet, we have included a proposed report that provides revenue and detailed expenditure information on how the money was originally allocated, revenues from other sources, and how much we have spent to date. Over the past eight years, we spent a total of $42.7 million, which includes revenues from other sources. Of this, 61% of the revenues were allocated to transportation-related programs and capital infrastructure, 10% towards public safety, 7% towards parks and recreation, and 21% towards other programs. The annual report also includes specific information. For example, the city provided 5,211 miles of street sweeping this past measure K year. The city also provides annual financial support to the county of Yolo Library System. And in return, the library is open four hours on Sundays and also maintains the programming and other services to the community. In addition, over 500-plus children benefit from the measure K-funded after-school program. In February 2003, the city council passed resolution 0258, providing guidance to staff regarding the spending of the half cent of the sales tax proceeding. The sales tax revenue is split 50-50 between base allocation and capital allocation. In your packet, we have included a scorecard that demonstrates that staff has adhered to council's direction. The scorecard is broken into base annual allocation and a capital 10-year allocation. Regarding the base allocation, we allocate funds on a as-needed basis. For example, you may note, we have allocated funding for the operations of the library and also the first five programs. In addition, funding for water rate reduction is greater than originally anticipated. This is because of the volume of new residential water connection between 2001 and 2007, which receives a $3 measure K credit on the utility bill. In capital allocation, we assigned the full allocation at the beginning of the program instead of annually. This allowed us with the flexibility to advance fund projects, most particularly the road rehab projects. There are two active and one new proposed capital projects remaining in the, in the program. City staff is, is present here to answer any specific question about a capital project. We are planning to publish this annual report in the local newspaper, the Newsletter. We are planning to publish this annual report in the local newspaper, the Newsletter, and also publish on the city's website by June 30th. A copy of the report is, will also be available in the City Finance Department. The purpose of this public hearing is to address any questions or concerns before this report is published. This completes my report and I'd like to return it to you, Mr. Mayor, for any questions or comments the council may have and open up the public hearing.
Questions at this time? All right, we reopen the public hearing. Again, we have no cards to speak because this is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing on item 10. Return it to the council. May I approach him, Kristoff?
No, I would just like to thank Evelyn and you for putting together, you know, the document that we said we would put together every year to show the folks where those monies are going. If anybody comes in to ask, "Hey, you know, we had this Measure J and K 10 years ago, what did you spend that money on?" We have a document that shows that and we do that every single year and we promised the voters that we would do that and I'm certainly glad that that's one of the things. And I think that's a good reason, I think that's one of the reasons that people have some confidence, that once the council says, "This is something that we're going to do," we follow through and that's what we do. And so hopefully that carries on to, you know, a whole lot of other things. But, and also, it's a very important year this year because we're getting ready, Measure J and K passed 10 years ago and we're getting ready to drop that figure from half a percent to a quarter of a percent. And so, you know, it's going to be very important that people understand where those dollars are going, even though they're going to be less, where are they going? Thank you.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, I'd like to maybe just echo what Mr. Kristoff has said, that in general, you know, measures like this are going to be coming again in the future, I would imagine. And this really provides a basis for people to be able to rely on the City Council and the city to do what they're going to, say they're going to do with the revenue and to really spend the money in line with what the community believes is the best spending pattern for that. So this is, I think, a good record of us doing that. You know, some people may disagree with the different categories, but I frankly haven't heard major disagreements. I think in general, I think we've done a fairly good job of spinning this away, we should be spending it and like Mr. Kristoff said, we still have a small percentage that's going to be continuing in the future for capital improvement projects that hopefully will keep up the, this type of reporting and keep building on public confidence.
Mr. Vegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think, you know, obviously, we see these staff reports on a regular basis and I think Mr. Kristoff is right, this is something that we promised the community we would do every year to make sure that everybody knew exactly where that half-cent sales tax went. And I think it bears repeating, very briefly, that a lot of the things that we've done in our community in the last 10 years would not have happened without the community's support for the half-cent sales tax. A lot of the street rehabilitation is directly related to the half-cent sales tax, a lot of the bike lanes that we've put in, some of the preschool, the Bright Park Fitness Course, some of the child, a lot of the childcare portable facilities, the skate park, high school pool covers, additional police officers, firefighters, the library, the Washington Firehouse. I mean, these are all the things that we were able to do as a result of this half-cent sales tax. So I think it just bears repeating and reminding folks that we did exactly what we said we were going to do with this money and this report is nicely laid out. Thank you.
Yeah, I certainly agree. We have the, the full half-cent will continue, so we, the half-cent base that was, a quarter-cent base that was originally approved and then the quarter-cent extension that the voters approved in 2008 for flood protection and for streetcar purposes and so, which was approved overwhelmingly by the electorate in the community, I think both because of their support for flood protection and for the streetcar project, but also because we've done exactly what we had said to the voters we would accomplish. And part of the point of this originally was we wanted to bring some amenities and some improvements in the parts of the, of West Sacramento that weren't experiencing significant growth and so we didn't have, we had no impact, developer fees and all of that to pay for things like Bright Park improvements or for things at the library or the firehouse or other things. And so this was a way to, for the whole community and actually at the time at least, it was because almost all of our sales taxes were generated by businesses who, as opposed to local residents, because we didn't have as many places to shop. It was a way for, to get external folks to help us pay for those improvements, quality of life improvements in the older parts of the city and it has been successful in doing that. And I know just at the, at Seco, at the region, the, the, the West Sacramento, just on streets alone, is the envy of the region in terms of our, of the scope of, of the amount of road rehabilitation that we've done. And being able to respond instantly on things like the streetcar or about the Barge Canal Access Park that we opened, I mean, those are the sorts of projects that normally you can't do because there's just no revenue sources for them and this allowed us to take advantage of opportunities as they emerged. I think it's a good report, it's solid, it holds us accountable for the promises that were made and it's clearly in line with what the voters had approved nine years ago.
All right, so the request is that we direct the Director of Finance to publish the report? Your motion?
I move that we direct the Director of Finance to publish the report.
Right, so we move by Mayor Kristoff and seconded by Mr. Vegas. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. Item 11 is a public hearing in consideration of joint resolutions 11-27 and 11-35, authorizing sales to the city of West Sacramento of approximately 4.01 acres of redevelopment agency-owned real property located along Tower Bridge Gateway, and Joint Resolution 11-41 rescinding previously adopted Joint Resolution 10-80.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Your consideration tonight are two option agreements of agency property to be sold to the city. And the properties are a little over four acres. One of the properties is the Tower Court site, it's about 3.6 acres of the property. And the other portion is a portion of the three-acre parcel that we bought from Union Pacific in 2008, which we refer to as the Y-track. It's the remaining piece that's in the agency's possession, it's about .4 acres. The option agreements would have a carrying cost to the city if you guys decided to execute, excuse me, if you gentlemen decided to execute the option agreement. The carrying costs would be the CFD 27 payments and the flood assessments on the Y-property and then just the flood assessments on the Tower Court property plus a one-time payment of $500. The purchase price for the properties would be determined at a future date based on appraised fair market value and that, the process for that is outlined in the option agreement that would be something that both the agency and the city would determine if that price had been met and then you, then the city would have the opportunity to exercise that option once that process was followed. It's important to note how the agency acquired these properties. The properties were acquired with tax increment and as such, there are certain regulations that we have to follow in order to dispose of that property. It was acquired to eliminate blighting conditions and so I thought I would just briefly overview what those were. On Tower Court, in the late 1980s, early 1990s, there were several undesirable uses that were on that property and dilapidated structures. The agency went through a process of negotiating to buy out the property owners as well as using eminent domain to take out one of the property owners to acquire that site. And then in 1998, the City Council abandoned Tower Court, which is where that site gets its name from, and so that consolidated the entire site. The Y-property, as I mentioned earlier, was a Union Pacific acquisition and that was purchased to remove the rail that bisected the riverfront that was serving the Sumax and Warehouser parcels. That rail came out in 2000, late 2008 and since then, we have engaged the River Cats in a land exchange to transfer property that was part of the Y that were developable with property that they owned that we needed for the 2014 planned right-of-way. So this is the last piece that's left of that and in December, we brought forward a resolution, Resolution 1080, that talked about having the city transfer pieces of property that it owned around this Y remnants. It was the piece of property that we purchased for the third and Tower Bridge Gateway at great intersection, I think you should remember, it's called the Waley Property. And then there were also pieces, other pieces of SR 275. And that, tied with the Y-property, creates like a 1.4-acre development site. So in December, we had asked that this city transfer over, it's about one acre of city-owned property, go to the agency to consolidate that site since we were in the middle of a negotiation with the adjacent property owner. We did not take those actions because you approved that resolution in late December and early January, we found out about what was happening with the governor's budget. So we're asking you to rescind that resolution and have the city, in fact, take the Y-property in this option. What the city would achieve by taking this option is you would have an opportunity to have two development sites. One of those would be developed probably in consolidation with the Experience Motel Site. We just received a grant for a master planning for $100,000 that would allow us to do a transit-oriented development site plan for the Experience Motel Site, the Tower Court Site, and the Delta Lane Affordable Housing Site that's included in the Bridge District. We are also undergoing remediation on the Tower Court Site and eager to have that clean, finish the cleanup in October of this year, so that site will be ready for development. The Y-property, as I mentioned, we'd already been negotiating with the adjacent property owner. Those negotiations fell through, but we were told by that property owner that there was the potential for those negotiations to pick back up again. As required by redevelopment law, you need to conduct a public hearing and adopt these options by resolution since the property was purchased with tax increment and a 33433 report was made available to the public two weeks prior to this meeting and that report includes findings about how these sales would help eliminate blighting conditions in the area. I'm available if you have any questions.
Questions?
Katie, on the exclusive negotiating agreement part, those negotiations fell through, are they going to be ongoing, I mean, are they going to start back up?
I don't know. The ENA expired in January and it was my sense that it was possible that those negotiations could potentially pick back up again if there was a development project available. I think that was one of the points that we ran into, was that there typically when we're negotiating for the property, there's development that, you know, we're looking to encourage and the Bridge District is still kind of, you know, getting started, so we hadn't gotten there yet.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And we're going to open the public hearing on item 11. Have no cards, but it is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll turn it to the council for further questions or discussion? Your motion? Mr. Johansson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move that the City Council adopt Joint Resolution 11-41, rescinding Joint Resolution 1080, approved by the City Council on the redevelopment agency on December 15, 2010, and adopt Joint Resolution 1127, approving the option agreements, including any specific agency-approved charges to the existing option agreements and making findings required by the California Health and Safety Code, and adopt Joint Resolution 1135, approving the option agreements, including specific agency-approved changes to the existing option agreements and make findings required by the California Health and Safety Code, and authorize the city manager and the executive director to execute, deliver, and hand all documents and taking in all actions necessary to consummate the transactions contemplated in Joint Resolutions 1127 and 1341.
That's been moved by Mr. Johansson and seconded by Mr. Vegas. No further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none. Motion carries. Item 12 is consideration of Resolution 11-42 to grant another designated period for two years additional service credit and certifying compliance with Government Code Section 7507 and 20,000, 20,903. Mr. Wright?
Good evening, Mayor Cobaldon, members of the council. As you will recall, on May 18th, the council approved an extension of the CALPER's two-year service credit benefit to the Director of Finance classification. At that meeting, the approximate cost of the benefit was made public as required by CALPER's. As of today's date, we have received no public comment. Tonight's staff is requesting the council adopt Resolution 11-42, designating April 1st, 2011 through June 30, 2011, as the 90-day period for the retirement and election of the benefit. The council adopts a resolution, then the city clerk will need to certify compliance with Government Code 7507, which is essentially that the cost of the benefit was made public at a public hearing at least two weeks in advance and the mayor will have to certify compliance with Government Code 20903, which is essentially that there is an operational need and that at least one position will be permanently, remain permanently vacant. Are there any questions, councilman?
Are there questions? Mr. Johansson?
Phil, on this, I know, you know, there would be some questions about this type of thing whenever there's any type of retirement or enhancement to retirement. Is there a way to estimate what the cost savings are going to be because of this? That, you know, it's, the cost is $90,000, but what is the potential savings to the city for making this move?
There's two pieces to the answer to that question. First, just a reminder to council that a year ago, we offered the PARS package. The person in this job classification was eligible and expressed interest, given our situation, the city manager's information, is to keep the person in this position until we finish the two-year budget. But on the dollars, we have one of two positions that we intend to be unfilled. Those are probably in the $90,000 range, so within two years of the two-year budget, we would actually probably double the savings of what the cost is. And then finally, just to comment, that the $90,000, which is the cost, is spread out over 20 years, so we don't actually put out the $90,000.
Great, no thanks. Other questions?
I'm supportive of this because it is a wrap-up of an older issue. The provision of these sorts of retirement incentives isn't free and it's distortion, it distorts the overall retirement system, public retirement system in California, so I'm not supportive of it as a general policy. We had to take some specific emergency actions, but I don't want, I don't want the, my support for this to communicate or convey in any way that I'm going to be voting for a bunch of additional retirement enhancements and what have you. We're in a new, we have to make permanent reductions regardless at this stage, whether or not retirements are achieved in the, in the, in the, in the budget that we're going to hear in a couple of weeks. And so retire, this sort of enhancement is an appropriate approach in a near, short-term emergency situation as you're trying to determine the options that you have, but it's not, it's not a, I mean, these are, the savings that we achieve by not filling positions are savings that we're going to have to achieve anyway from not filling the positions as we, as we develop the next budget, so.
Other comments? A motion? Vegas?
I'm going to give it a shot here. Recommend that the council approve Resolution 1142 to grant another designated period for two years additional service credit and certify compliance with the Government Code Section 7507 and 20903.
Second. Okay, just moved and seconded. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none. That carries. Item 13 is presentation and discussion on the California Indian Heritage Center project and request for consideration of concurrence with the center's general plan.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Tonight, the staff is before you, before you to inform you that the City Council about the progress staff and State Parks have made, resolving outstanding issues and concerns related to the planning of the California Indian Heritage Center, and also to request council's review and concurrence with the CIHC's general plan prior to State Parks taking the general plan before the California State Parks Commission. As the council may recall, this item was brought before you in a workshop format in 2011 of January. In that workshop format, State Parks presented the project, rolled out the preferred alternative, rolled out a project description, detailed the project phasing, and it was in the public comment from the council as well as from residents that staff received a list of issues that were raised by both council and residents. Staff, council, sorry, excuse me, council directed staff to return with the list of these issues and also direct staff to resolve these issues hopefully with State Parks prior to returning with the project. As you see in attachment three of your staff report, staff and State Parks created a matrix outlining the various issues brought up at the January meeting and within those list of issues, staff has narrowed down a list of more issues that require a little bit more scrutiny and that's listed in your staff report. Those issues are related to planned parking allocation for the overall site, special events plan, off-site parking agreements, levy improvements, the use of the JTS site as an interim use, which includes also a new issue related to that as the payment of a development agreement obligation for Lot 299, the homeowners association fee issue and concern raised by residents of the rivers, which I should note that council was, provided a memo, an email today from State Parks, that memo was... State Parks, that memo was given to the city clerk, who then provided a copy of that memo with all the agenda items here in council chambers. In addition to these issues that need closer scrutiny, it was during the sequo process, the 45-day public review and comment, that staff learned of various issues from respected approving agencies. And after reviewing these issues, it did raise some concerns with staff over the feasibility and whether a design solution is achievable to move the project forward. After reviewing comments, staff had to take a closer look at these issues by these responsible agencies and bring them to the attention of the City Council, because overall, they could impact the project design and feasibility of the project and potentially funding for the project. Based on current information, there could be a possibility that only development may only occur on the lot 299 as an interim use, or possibly that the Agency 43 acre property may not be developable based on feasibility issues and approval needed by responsible agencies. At this time, staff recommends to council to consider options to ensure that we see the project developed in a manner consistent with the master agreement, or in the worst case, that the development of the 43 acres proves to be infeasible, that the city end up with the property in return. Therefore, staff is recommending that the council authorize the City Manager to concur with the general plan at a future date, provided there is a mechanism to address what happens to the Agency 43 acre property, and that ends up being determined infeasible. And B, that there is a resolution on the payment of the lot 299 development agreement obligation. This concludes staff's presentation. Kathy Taylor with State Parks is in attendance and plans to speak to the council regarding staff report. At this time, I can take any questions from the council, or we can move forward with Kathy Taylor's presentation.
All right, and I should point out, zero cards on this. No requests to speak. Are you holding them? Oh, from Kathy, okay, but I have no, no other, none others, so I don't. All right, I don't want anyone to be surprised that are, if you're intending to address the council on this item, that card needs to go in like right away, so. Okay? All right, so Kathy, were you gonna make some remarks? I am harsh, but it's equally harsh to everyone, and I'm trying to provide adequate notice of how harsh it's gonna be.
I just wanted to comment, Kathy Taylor with State Parks. Just a couple of items. You have in front of you the recommended action, and the A item, which would direct the City Manager to work out a mechanism. We've talked quite a bit about that, so we would be looking at something like a deed restriction perhaps as an alternative for item A, but we would like to just work with the City Manager. That's fine with us to come up with some language that works. On the payment, item on lot 299, what we would hope the City Council would look at is the park development being an appropriate mitigation for item B, and we could certainly talk more about that as well. And if you have questions, we did bring our team, so we can field questions for you.
All right, thanks. All right, so to the council, questions for either staff or for the State Parks, stage first? Questions first, then we'll go to comments later. Mr. Johannesen?
Yeah, I guess the, what I'm going to be guiding by in this, and we've talked about in the past, is the MOU that was reached a while back during the, basically the formation, project formation stage, and we had a lot of community input at that time into particularly the impacts on the neighborhood, the parking structure, and the traffic intrusion in neighborhoods and that type of thing. So, is, is, is that, are the concepts in that MOU fully being represented in the management and operations plan here now? It looks like they are, because it doesn't look like the parking structure is not contemplated. It looks like transit is going to be a heavy element in how to get people in and out of there. And also, the homeowner, homeowners fee issue, I think was another big issue, of trading off some security services and landscaping for that. So, have you gone through the MOU and to make sure that those concepts are being incorporated? If not, I'd like to know which ones are not being incorporated into this.
For clarification, your reference to MOU, I think what you're referring to is the master agreement.
That's right, the master agreement, right.
To answer the question is yes. The issues that were, that you're raising have been addressed, and they are, they tie into the requirements for the master agreement, and what is approved and authorized versus what is something the city does not want to see develop, like a parking garage. We're not even exploring that option, and State Parks isn't proceeding in that manner. So, yes, they comply.
Okay, all right, thanks. Mr. Kristoff?
Jim, lot 299, okay. So what, I guess what, what I'm hearing is, is through the, the EIR process, or general plan process. Some agencies have said, whoa, wait a minute, there are some issues that may arise, and we're not sure that they can be properly mitigated, i.e., maybe Department of Water Resources, flood, different things, because sewer pipes and water pipes are gonna have to go in underneath the levy, and that hasn't been really looked at close enough, I think, because we may have to do a slurry seal, we may have a setback levy, we, there's a whole bunch of different things that may happen. So I guess what I don't quite understand then is, why would you move forward and develop lot 299 when we really don't know what's gonna happen long-term? If the Indian Center is actually gonna go in? Because it's important that the Indian Center go in, it goes up on top of the levy, and, you know, it gets built in where they said they were gonna do it on that 43 acres. So how do we do that?
To be clear, the comments coming from the responsible agencies have been specific to the 43 acre site. They did not address or comment on any issue or concern over development on lot 299.
Oh, no, they wouldn't. There, there's no reason.
Yes.
No, exactly. But I guess what I'm saying, though, is, is it sounds to me like somebody wants to move forward and develop lot 299, they want to do adequate landscaping, and they want to do, have security there, and what's the nexus then if we can't do the, the Indian Cultural Center? Kathy? Come on, you can, I, I can use both of you.
That was one of staff's concerns, but Kathy, maybe you can explain the change in the phasing. When we started out with the general plan, we, we had not acquired the former JTS property. The way we look at the JTS site is it does provide an opportunity to, to bring our operations over sooner, because we think that is a value in terms of accessing the site, being able to bring tourists to the site. If we, if we move forward on phase one, which is actually the trail system, the outdoor facilities, the amphimetto, that whole piece of the project, we still need to be able to stage operations. It would be very difficult for us to try to stage operations at both the State Indian Museum and in West Sacramento and try to, you know, try to operate two different locations. So the concept was if we could bring some of those operations over to the interim site until we were able to build the facility, which obviously is dependent upon all of those permits, it's dependent upon your levy work that has to be done, it does provide us an opportunity to be out here, to start helping, to bring security to the site, the presence of the facility, and use it as a staging area, because obviously, that lot does have utilities, we can do an interim facility that could then be repurposed for the long-term uses that are identified in the general plan.
So what do you plan on, do you plan on building any structures on lot 299?
That would be the plan, is that the structure that you see in the general plan for the former JTS site would actually be built, but a, a interim use as, as a museum facility, so to speak. Could be the temporary house for the museum project, and then we would move into the larger facility once that goes forward.
So, so would security then include the whole 43 acres, or just lot 299?
No, we would actually want to stage on the JTS site so that we actually could patrol the site, and we're talking about having two rangers on site all the time, a security contract for the evening overnight operations. You'd see a presence of our officers and our staff on the site, so there would actually be some activity going on. We would be doing tours of the site, we would use the site for events. Even though there wasn't a facility there, we would actually be out operating.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Viegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Jim, for, so what was the, if you know, what was the intended use of the mitigation fees for the closure of the lighthouse? And obviously, that's, that's something that, that we talked about way back when, and I think certainly folks felt that there was an amenity that was gonna be lost in the community, and so, what, open space, or how does, how would that have been applied, or how would that have been used? Had it, had it been collected?
I don't think the council had really detailed how it would be used, but there were quite a bit of discussions through the Brighton-Broadrick Community Action Network, Action Program, of how possibilities of where it might be used. And they seemed to be open space, recreation-related in that particular action plan. But I don't think anything had been formally directed by you.
Johannesen?
Yeah, maybe another question for Kathy. One of the questions is, I guess it's the 800-pound gorilla in the room is, you know, we're having State Park closures as we speak. So the question is really, gets down to the viability of this project, and really, I think we've got a legitimate concern that, you know, the state does undertake the project. The state has been known to sell project, property before. And one of the ones, one of the things I know that we want to be able to do is control that property, because it's such, you know, it's, it's such a valuable piece of property. Can you just maybe briefly outline the funding, how it looks now? Because I know it's going to be private donations and the state in partnership creating the financing, but how is that all coming together now?
Well, first I'll address, we obviously have park closures that have been announced, and those would roll out starting this fall and into 2012, because State Parks is experiencing a budget reduction like many agencies are. As we went through that list, we did look at significance of park units, statewide significance, that type of thing. The Indian Museum in particular was not targeted in that for that very reason, because of its statewide significance. And I wouldn't see that going forward, that that would, that would be a facility that would be targeted. In terms of the Indian Heritage Center itself, we have obviously funding that was already allocated to do studies and to get us through into phase one, and we are continuing with that. We do have funding still allocated and bonds that were sold and allocated to the project. So we feel very confident and very comfortable that we have funding to get us into phase one. In terms of how we go forward with an operation, our concept is that the operating funds we're using to operate the State Indian Museum would actually transfer over, because this project, when adopted by the State Park Commission, actually moves, creates a new park unit, but we will be declassifying another park unit. So the State Indian Museum will actually cease to exist and become the Indian Heritage Center. So that budget, staff allocations to that project all come with it. We have developed the Indian Heritage Center Foundation, so we are very actively seeking donations, contributions, grant funds, that type of thing. We feel very good about being able to get at least into phase one in the next two years. So I can't give you any guarantees, obviously, but we never stop looking at the big picture and creating great things and having, having a vision either, so.
I guess the question is, how much are you relying on private donations to make the project viable? Because we're seeing, you know, tribes are having issues right now as well.
Well, I, you know, I can't tell you what the ultimate number will be, but we are looking to at least 50% to, you know, 100% if we can get there with private funds. I mean, that will be good for everyone if we can actually raise enough money to do this project completely with private funds. That's probably not feasible. We will be looking at other sources of grant funds, existing funding that we have already allocated. We have a general fund contribution and a 40 contribution to the project.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Desmond? Thank you. Just a couple of questions, going back to light, excuse me, lot 299, and it's just a, you state that it's, the intent here is just to have a phased-in project where, you know, nothing can be done, or at least a minimum trailways and so forth on the other 43 acres can be done. This would serve as the interim site. You actually do contemplate building, doing whatever else. Is there, and in looking at your phasing plan, you kind of outlined that, but have we considered, maybe staff knows this, how does that can impact kind of the plans for additional parking and traffic ways and, and whatever else that we had planned otherwise on the 43 acres, but now they're being moved out? Maybe you can expand on that, whoever wants to take that.
Well, planned ultimately on the lot 299 is overall parking for the center. So they will have enough parking to potentially contain development of the all phases of the project on the JTS site.
Even with a structure?
Yes.
About eight acres, which is comparable to what buildable acreage is on the west side of the levy.
Okay. Doesn't, it doesn't change traffic patterns going in and out at all that have been looked at by? Okay.
Now, just, just to clarify, the concept at full buildout has all of the parking on the JTS site screened by the buildings, but that would be the parking location.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
So on the, the screening piece for the JTS piece, the, I just, we had a long conversation about this before, and I personally, I hate parking lots that are, that interrupt the flow of pedestrian traffic, particularly in this location where we're trying to connect the, the rivers, neighborhoods with other parts of, of Broadrick, and so it's really important to not have this break. I just want to be clear that the, the, because it's not, it's not, it's hard to tell from the various sections of the general plan, whether or not the parking lot will be fully screened by buildings, or whether it'll be screened on one side by buildings and by other sides, on another side by shrubs and trees, or, or where in the, where in the plan I might find reference to, to this. Now, the other piece that is important is that even buildings can, can detonate street activity if they're not, if they're not active themselves, or if it's the back of the building, or if it's the Pack Bell Building on J Street or whatever with no windows and nothing going on, that's as bad as a parking lot. And so, it's probably part of what we had talked about before, was that the active uses in the park, in those buildings on the parking lot would be community-facing as opposed to all into the parking lot with just your, you know, signage or something on the back. And so, is that in here in the general plan? It's hard to, it's hard to tell from the various sections where this is referenced.
There is pictured Appendix D. If you want to fill it out. This doctor, the Appendix D separator. There's a diagram of it, and it is shielded by the building. So the concept for interim use is that those buildings that are shielding the parking area would actually be the temporary use facility for the, the Indian Museum, offices, the security office, that type of thing.
Well, Appendix D.
Can you hand me this one?
It's only in yours, going up there.
Just kidding.
Cool, crap. Do you want me to bring it up?
I don't, I don't see an appendix, I see Appendix B, and that's.
Appendix D.
No, I only see an Appendix B. We don't have separators in ours, but I only have an Appendix B, and then after that, there's a series of attachments of bills, legislation, letters from the commission and others.
Oh, you're looking at the staff report, and I'm looking at the draft.
No, I'm looking at this. Am I looking in the wrong section? Am I looking in the wrong section? I'm looking at the appendix here.
This is the one that's important.
Before all this? Oh, okay. All right. So it's after the, it's after the legislation? Okay. All right, so the, just as a, are you looking at the same thing? So, in terms of our, I mean, there are different, different levels of this plan are binding at different levels. And is this, you know, is given the policy preference that I just articulated, is this sufficiently controlling to assure that five years out, we don't have a parking lot with some pretty shrubs on the side shielding it? That this is an enforceable part of the plan?
Yes, staff has communicated to State Parks your intent and your goal that you'd like to see developed on lot two ninety-nine. And I think I should point out too, in the master agreement, there is a provision in there that says during the design phase and the course of design, that this project will come back to the council. So you will have an opportunity, if they move forward with this interim use on lot two ninety-nine, to review that and have the ability to guide and provide some direction to State Parks and their architect, their designers.
The, the discussions about the HOA, at least in the staff report indicates, and I think, and you said, that there's been discussions about a contractual obligation to fund landscape improvements or security. Could you talk a little bit more in detail about what you mean by that and to what extent that these are, they would offset costs that the HOA would otherwise have or they, or they simply add additional benefit? Those are, those are important distinctions if you're on the HOA board and you have a certain set of security and lighting and landscaping requirements that you have to do. It would be nice if somebody also gave you some extra landscaping too, but if it doesn't actually eat into the costs that you have otherwise had, it's not ultimately helpful if you're worried about the financial position of the HOA. So it's, what's the, what's the, the scope of what it is that we'd be talking about in this, in HOA provision?
The scope of the landscaping improvements for planter areas and medians would actually be payment or additional funds to help maintain those areas. It will not be for additional like in costs as we designed a project, they decide to plant within that area. No, this would be help served. So I would say it's a direct effect. It would have an impact or reduce what the service costs are for maintaining the planter areas. For security, security is provided on site. What State Parks plans to do is increase the level of nighttime security. I don't know if that has a direct impact on the HOA as far as to draw down on their costs because they already paid for security at this time.
I think what we were looking at is that the HOA, when we looked at the budget for the HOA, which we received a copy of, there is funding going into the landscaping on Lighthouse Drive. Our concept would be that we would assist with that. So there would be either financial contribution where we could take on some of that work or we could contribute to the contract that's in place to do that landscaping. Security, I know there is security behind the gate. That's one area where we could work with the HOA to look at combining into one contract so that the security services we have on the forty-three acres and the contracts that the HOA has in place for security behind the gate could actually be one contract to get the economies of having one contract instead of two. So I think there are a lot of options there that we could contribute in a way that still has tangible benefit back to the state because that's a requirement for us to be able to make that contribution. We have to have some nexus to the project itself. And I think there's, those two ways from our perspective are really the most valuable and actually can be probably the most beneficial to the HOA and their budget.
Anderson.
Yeah, maybe just quickly on that topic. I know there's been some discussion in that area about using cameras as potential security devices. So there could be opportunities to maybe work together on a camera system that could help reduce the overall costs and maybe have the state, you know, monitor, use monitoring facility with the installation, maybe a couple more cameras. So it could be a more cost-effective way to enhance security in that whole area.
Good, we could make capital improvements like that if we could.
Mr. President, Kristoff.
Where are we on the Siri property? I know that you said you were going to at least open a dialogue. And where is that? I haven't seen anything.
Our understanding at this time is that the Trust for Public Lands is close to executing an option on Siri property. So there have been a lot of discussions from the TPL office in Alaska with the Cook Inlet organization. Our concept there is once TPL is able to do that, we would work with them on grants to actually make the purchase of property. Warren.
Just need, if we're gonna, any comments need to be on the microphone so that they're in the record and so that thousands of people watching.
Councilmember Warren Westrup, Special Projects Manager for California State Parks. I, I did talk with the Trust for Public Lands project manager and he indicated that TPL, Trust for Public Land did contract for an appraisal of the property. They didn't share with us what the appraisal came out at. They did share with Siri's what it came out at and it was way below what, what Siri's thought it was worth. They are going to contract for another appraisal and see if they can get more into the ballpark. Then like Kathy indicated, we would probably pursue a River Parkway grant to assist in funding the purchase of the property from Trust for Public Land through their option.
So they're not going to donate the land, they would want to sell the land because they had purchased the land?
I, I don't believe they purchased it initially.
Well, in some respects. There was something that changed hands.
Fell in, fell into their hands there, so to speak. But they, they are expecting to, to get some, some dollars out of it. Initially, we had hoped through our, our contacts with, with various tribes that we might be able to, to get the land at no cost from Siri. Unfortunately, they're, they're an Alaskan tribe.
Right.
And hence the connection to Trust for Public Land because they do have an office in Alaska and were able to make some inroads with the folks there. We were hoping to get at least a bargain sale out of it.
Thank you. A quick comment if I may. I, I think if I read all of this, if we approve, approve the general plan, we approve this document, really that's sort of the end of our approval process. Because then things go to various agencies and they comment on it and, and whatever happens. So this is really our last bite of the apple, so to speak, through this planning process. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Well, if that's the last, if this is our last bite of the, I guess what I want to have happen is I want to make sure that they build the damn thing. But yet they got state agencies that, you know, we've dealt with before and some of them are very, it's, it's very, very difficult. And maybe there is no way to mitigate some of the issues that other agencies may, or yeah, issues that they may, they may raise. But I want to make, so how do we, here we're giving, getting ready to transfer over forty-three And if nothing happens, I, I need to make sure that we can get that forty-three acres back. Need to make sure that lot two ninety-nine is something everybody is happy with. And I'm, I'm hoping that since we don't have another bite of the apple, so to speak, we need to put some language in either a, a development agreement or some kind of a site agreement with these folks that make sure all of those things happen, from my perspective.
Councilmember Kristoff, I may have jumped the gun, just tabbed it. When this council decides that it will be authorized, the city manager, that we concur with the general plan. State Parks will then go to California State Parks Commission for approval of the general plan slash EIR. After that, State Parks is required to return to the city council and council will have another bite at the apple, albeit the, the parameters are quite narrow. They narrow down to design standards, traffic and transportation, parking and security. So our scope narrows just a little bit. So some of the issues that you raise obviously don't fit into that package. And at the time when the agreement was contemplated, obviously our flood improvement program and flood concerns weren't where they are today.
I think I'll have to depend on city attorney to put some languages together.
Jim has correctly stated, you'll have one more opportunity after State Parks acts to review the general plan for, for those four items. That is a precondition to their ability to exercise the option. So until you give that consent, they can't move forward on the project. There are other conditions to exercise the option, including that they have completed the design process for the initial phase and the design plans and documents have been reviewed by council. I'm not a hundred percent sure whether, when they, when you come back, you're planning on bringing those designs at that time or is that something that would occur subsequent to this?
Try that on me again.
Well, you're gonna, let's, assuming the council acts and gives the city manager the authority to concur, you'll then go to State Parks for commission, for approval of the EIR and approval of the general plan. At which point you come back here for one last look on those four conditions that Jim identified. The option also talks about a condition to exercise, the option being that the council has reviewed design, the design process for the initial phase and all design plans and documents have been reviewed by the city council. Is, is that part of the review of design plans and documents going to be happening the next time you come back or is that a subsequent action?
We would assume that that would be something we would be bringing back to the council as a subsequent action.
You will have those design plans ready.
Yeah, we're not going to be ready in August or September to bring the designs, but certainly within the next. Not sure.
So you will have those additional opportunities to look at more specific designs, I think, for phase one, which is the condition. Now, you will not, you're not given that same opportunity to look at subsequent phases, but remember that the environmental document is being done for this, is a program level document, which means there will be subsequent environmental review for each of the phases as they move forward. And the city as a responsible agency will have an opportunity to comment as part of the environmental process. So you will still have opportunities to, for input into the project as it moves forward. And then the last piece, Jim mentioned flood. There is language in the master agreement that contemplates involvement and cooperation between the city and State Parks on flood-related issues, including design issues, I believe, as it goes forward. So there are additional opportunities that wouldn't necessarily come back to the council, but there would be opportunities for staff to be involved in how flood issues are addressed.
But very few of the issues we've talked about tonight would actually meet any of the, they're, they're not design standards, they're not parking, they're not traffic. The stuff that we've called, wanted to get resolution on this evening won't be coming back to us, right? If there's not a satisfactory resolution on the HOA issue, for example, there's no, there's no further point at which that can be raised as part of this.
That's correct. This is, this is your point at which you have the broadest discretion in reviewing and commenting and, and concurring with the designs. And so this is the time to resolve those issues that are not design, traffic, parking, security.
Well, and design standards, which I think, I mean, the design standards, which is where we will have, I mean, there's the final, final, the final later design for the first phase, it's the, the, the final review and approval of the general plan is about design standards, which I assume is going to be limited to the, essentially to the design standards section of this document. Which is why I raised a question about lot one ninety-nine is that it's, those design standards don't constrain the building screening, activated street use, they're more about lighting. No, they don't. I mean, they're, it's in the document, but it's not in that section that says that it will be, you know, that, that gives us that tight control. And I'm, I'm very concerned about that. I've kind of raised this issue a million times, but, because it's very, very important that even as an interim use, especially because interim uses often last for fifty years, that there not be an open parking lot or a parking lot with, with, with shrubs or, or buildings where it's all oriented to the inside. That this has to be a connector in the neighborhood and part of the pedestrian environment that we're trying to create. So I, that, that, I just, that issue can't be, I just want to know that it's, that it's solid. And that it's not excluded later on, because it's not, it's covered in other parts of the document, including Appendix D, which is not part of the design standards, I'm sorry, Appendix D, which is not part of the design standards earlier in the document when it talks about the zones, which is the other area where this is discussed on a narrative basis. That's not the design standards either. Design standards focus around landscaping, lighting, building treatments and what have you, but it doesn't deal with the fundamental issue of the, of the, of the layout of the parcel.
So it, it appears Ms. Taylor wants to comment on that, but what we could propose is to add that in as something else that needs to be resolved and we can work with State Parks on getting the pedestrian connectivity, how the buildings and the parking are screened but still integrate with the surrounding streets, that the buildings activate the sidewalk and don't turn their backs to it, that we can work with them if they're willing to do that, if there might be a few more edits to the general plan before it goes to the State Parks Commission.
Yeah, and I was going to add that that is the purpose of this evening. If there are issues like that, we do have the opportunity to make those edits and get those in before they go to the State Park Commission. We need to, need to mail that in the next couple of days, but I think we can capture the intent of that. And just to clarify our intent, it is not to just build a surface parking. If we're going to do that as an interim use, this really is setting the standard for what this facility is going to be in the future. So we don't want it to be.
I understand. But this process is all about converting intent, converting intent into binding agreement.
Absolutely.
Because we can't rely, we won't be able to rely on that five to ten years ago. You won't be able to rely on our intent and we won't be able to rely on yours. So we need to lock, those areas where we won't have subsequent review of the topic, we need to lock them down. So that's why, that's why I'm.
That's an appropriate idea.
And I know we share, if we didn't share that vision right now, then we would probably just call it all off. But we do, but we need to make sure that it gets, that's what actually gets, gets, gets built. And I just, on the phasing of that first piece, the, you know, the, it's, I know the staff recommendation was pretty clear in the narrative, but not in the recommended action. And so I just want to pull that one out. You, you said the staff recommends that all landscaping and furniture improvements be completed as part of that first initial parcel. But, and so, you know, looking at the Appendix D, that you would not, that you couldn't just build the artist residence and the meeting space and the parking lot first, have that open for a couple of years and then build the buildings on the outside? Even if, even if that's the design plan that you couldn't phase it that way, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Then on the part, the, on the offsite parking issue, I don't know if we've been working at all with the, with the other state agencies. I mean, the, the two largest parking facilities in the city are both state-owned or operated, the Ziggurat Parking Garage and the Sturrs Garage. So I don't know what the status of those, of that is. You, you mentioned it in the staff report and indicates that the, that there's, there's not a, not a willingness to contractually secure a site for that, for that purpose. So I'm just, this actually came up, this issue, when we were at the Railroad Museum the other day around the sports and entertainment facility and the. around the sports and entertainment facility, and sort of the utter unwillingness of most state agencies in the urban core to release their parking facilities, even to make money in the evenings and weekends for other activities. And so we started a conversation with Senator Steinberg about a law that would require exactly this. So I'm just, I'm curious, is to the extent to which this is, you know, there are serious discussions going on with DGS and/or Sturrs about some sort of parking arrangement?
We've had very serious discussions with them. With the Ziggurat Building, there is actually external parking, which they're perfectly happy to do contracts with us. We wouldn't do any contracts yet, because we don't have any need to do that, and that may be sometime in the future, but that is privately operated parking. They do have sufficient parking to really be complimentary to what we do, because most of our heavy visitation would be the weekends. Probably the largest visitation day we have is museum day, free museum day in February. So that would, that would be a condition where we would want to use that offsite parking. So we put that in the management operations plan. We addressed that we would come up with trigger issues if we're going to exceed, I think the language we wrote in there is, if we're going to exceed the parking available at the site, that we would come up with contracts either at the Ziggurat Building, working with the River Cats Stadium, doing shuttle service at the site. Because Ziggurat obviously is a lot easier for us, just because it's an easy straight shot. But we have definitely talked to them, and that's available. How Sturrs, I think we didn't. Yeah, so we, additionally, the external lot, not that, they don't want to have lots used that are part of the building, just for security purposes, that type of thing.
We're familiar with that.
Could I just add one item? Just on page 44 of the general plan, we do talk about the former GTS parcel, and we do have in the general plan already that it's required to be screened, parking areas. So that is addressed in the description of the site. I just wanted to maybe defer staff to that. We can talk about the specific language if we need to amend that, but that is there.
Page, which page?
Page 44.
Is it 444, or?
I'm sorry, 4-4.
Wait, 4-4, 4-6?
4-4, says the former GTS parcel. And it basically says, any improvements will be designed with screened parking, will include landscaping and interface with the community.
Yes, that's actually exactly my concern, is that screening, by the terms of this document, and actually generally accepted, our planning work too, includes landscaping screening. And that's, what I'm trying to avoid is the notion that a two-foot shrub or a thin tree provide adequate, that what we're talking about is a build, is a street, an activated street environment with actual uses on the street.
Right.
Right, so, which is what the intent is, it's what's in the appendix, but it's not in the design. The design guidelines would be the only portion that we would actually have jurisdiction over later. So it needs to, we need to either cross-reference that or have some other, one of the areas where, you know, whether it's transportation, traffic and transportation, parking and security or design standards, needs to touch on that so that it's clear that we have the ability to enforce that obligation. All right, other questions or comments? Mr. President, question?
I guess this one is for Jeff and Toby. In some respects, it's not a question, but it's more of a comment. I received your, Jeff's letter to us today, and it seems like there may be some disagreement as far as how the mitigation is handled for the closure of the golf course. Monies were supposed to change hands, and from what I heard early today, earlier tonight, there is, in lieu of the funds, security issues could be looked at and also landscaping, additional landscaping, and maybe some joint landscaping and help offset some of those Is that going to be enough as far as what the payment should be or would have been? So that really the city is sort of made whole?
Two distinct issues here. One is the payment that would have been made by Group B or JTS, or the homeowners, to the HOA.
Right.
And what State Parks is, their position is that they are working on making this contribution on landscaping and indoor security or other means in order to deal with that. That's separate then from the contribution that Group B and its successors were bound to make to the city, as essentially as a mitigation for the loss of the open space, the access to the river and the golf course.
But it seems like.
Which is different, and State Parks' position on that matter is that we're creating this park for the community and the neighborhood, and that, their position is that is in lieu of that. So it's separate from the landscaping and security issue, which would be to offset the HOA expenses, as opposed to the city's.
Okay.
Mr. Russ, would you?
That's exactly the case. They're not proposing to provide any operational offsets or anything for this, just for the HOA. They're proposing really that their development would assist in mitigating the loss of open space, because they would be providing a recreational, cultural facility that would be a massive intrusion relative to their obligations.
I have a question on that piece, which is, the, yeah, I mean, I think, in that piece where the city was to receive the mitigation for the closure of the golf course. Will, the fact that we're, I would say, how we handle this is important, because if it proves not feasible, how do we capture this so that any successor, I mean, it's there already. The state will opt not to pay it, but should it, to me, this is money owed to the city, no matter where it ends up landing, whether we own it and then it sells off. Does that make sense? So this is, it was supposed to be Group B and its successors, where the final payment would come from. So the fact that the state has made its position known that they basically can't pay it, there's still an obligation there that has to be recognized.
I think there are a couple of ways to look at this. If we're talking about them going forward with some level of improvement in Phase One, and that ends up being the only improvement, then it would always presumably stay with the state, and it would be a downsized scale facility. And in that instance, I would assume that they would contend that they would never have to make a payment. A second option or a possibility would be that they go forward, but they don't actually ever build anything at all on any of the parcels, including JTS, at which point we may be able to, through our deed restrictions, assure that any subsequent owner of that property would have that obligation. So that may be a long time in coming, but we could probably leverage that. We have internally discussed the possibility that there might be some arrangement made that in the event they didn't proceed to deliver that recreational and cultural benefit, maybe then they owe us the money, but that hasn't, we haven't reached agreement on that point. And there's another option that we have discussed, and I think we had some, at least some tentative understandings, and that is, it may be that really JTS is, should be an active part of these discussions, because to the extent that they didn't convey those obligations to the state, they didn't fully disclose, and to the extent that JTS wants to continue to work in the city with any degree of success, they may want to maintain a relationship with the city, and it may be that the city and the state concurrently seek some sort of funding from JTS. So there are some alternatives that we've talked about, but we haven't reached agreement on anything to solve this problem. And I think at this point, the stated position of the state is that they would like to offer the cultural and recreational amenity in lieu of that obligation. And so then we would need to say, well, what if you don't meet that obligation? Even if that is satisfactory, what if you don't do that?
And I think it's important to note, we've described the position of the state and the state's contention, that is not the city's position. We've not in any way agreed that the state is not fully obligated to make this payment. And so the other option is litigation or every other means to recover the payment that we believe is due. So I want to be careful that we, in characterizing with the state's point of view, is that we don't suggest in any way that that's our view as well, because we've not, we've affirmatively not agreed with that position.
Agreed. And I think that's where my comment came in, is that we're having this discussion, and to your point, Toby, is that somehow we've got to document and codify what our intent is, is that that was an obligation that is still yet unfilled. I think JTS probably does need to be in this, since they're, they missed this for whatever reason. So, you know, and I do recall years ago on the planning commission, when we took up that project out in Rivers, this was a pretty big deal, that we talked about very actively on the planning commission, that this was, this fee would go directly towards the broader bright areas as an amenity somehow. So, you know, I think that's my frame of reference for this, is that this is nothing to do, really, I mean, I guess now only because the state is the current proposed project on this lot, but this goes back quite a ways. And so there is a certain feeling that we need to be made whole here. And my concern is, is part of what I heard earlier in terms of the mitigation proposal, that there would be contractual agreements made, is still subject to approval by the state, I'm assuming, that they, that whatever agreements you go forward aren't, we can't, you can't commit to today. And what those would ultimately add up to, we would never know until the process is completed. So if you wanted to go on contract for some other, I mean, am I understanding that correctly, that any mitigation, that any other contributions you would make towards the lighting and last rate, or any other contributions you make towards the security or whatever else out there that we've talked about, maybe I'm mixing up the issues, but that would, am I mixing up the issues? Okay, just want, thank you for clarifying that. But I think any other mitigation would, I would be concerned about, because it wouldn't reach fruition. So that's all.
Mr. Viegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I mean, I like your, starting with the premise that we don't, I mean, that money is still owed. I mean, I think there was ample discussion to make sure that we were properly mitigating, that there was proper mitigation for the open space. I think that was a long conversation, I think, was had by several. But I also think that in the interest of moving forward, I think we grant some latitude to the city manager to figure out a way to work with the applicant, to make sure that we recover the mitigation. And I think we bring JTS back to the table for the reasons that you stated, because I think it's, I think it's the appropriate, it's the right thing to do. And I think there, certainly in Phase One, given all the improvements, there are going to be ample opportunities to, you know, bring the city, you know, make it right. But I don't know how we, this evening.
Let me suggest that we not, that we pursue this probably farther than we should, that this is a matter of potential litigation between us and the state, and that brainstorming ways to deal with it is probably not an appropriate task for us to handle tonight, as part of this conversation.
I agree with that. And I would add that the two conditions that were, the two recommended actions, the conditions on your concurrence, would give the city manager some flexibility in coming up with a way, you could probably figure out some way to combine those two, if it was the desire of the council to be creative in ensuring that payments be made if the project is moved forward. Between those two conditions, we can probably try to figure out some way to address that.
Yep.
So payments, not improvements, is there, or?
Well, I guess for my purposes, I'm not completely comfortable with a total broad delegation of authority, because I would be very interested in at least some reaction to, to what extent are you seeking to get a full-cost payment as against some combination of benefits or costs, or some, or all benefits, but no money. And without some, you know, I understand and I agree with Christopher, that we shouldn't be negotiating any final outcome in this, and it is possible that we would end up disagreeing with it. But without having some sense of how important that is to the council, because as you'll recall, that whole provision to get that mitigation was a council-generated action, and so I think we need to get a sense of the council's, at least a sense that it was sort of generally, it was general mitigation and could be offset by a variety of things. That wasn't the term that was offered to Group B, but it may be at this stage, because we're not, we didn't get all that we expected from that, in any case, it may be something to be entertained. And some guidance there would help me, if you're inclined to give me authority to try to negotiate something.
I would personally much, I mean, this sounds like settlement, like pre-settlement conversation that we ought to be having in a closed session. I mean, even what has already been said tonight already is problematic from my perspective, that our, you know, our very next closed session, this could be part of that agenda for more specific and clear direction, that doesn't require us to both state the vehemence of our priorities and, you know, the conditions of our legal positions. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that I think this discussion, there is a recognition that there is some amount out there, there is some, something that you can talk about, and without getting into details, just to reiterate, the intent of that money was to benefit right and broadly. And there's certainly a number of different ways that that can happen. It doesn't necessarily have to be cash, but if you look, as you move forward toward your discussions, you know, to keep that in mind, that that was to benefit a certain target talent, and to whatever you all can come up with, it makes sense, you know, that's what I would be looking at, ultimately, what happens with that. As far as whether it's cash or not, it's.
I think I agree with Christopher, that we can get, we can fine-tune the direction. I think our goal would be to, if the council's inclined to go this direction with some general authority, would be to structure something so that they could proceed to get the necessary general plan and sequel approvals, and we would retain some ability to resolve the issue probably in that gap of time before they come back. So we can, I think we can, that's the way we would try to work it. So we don't, we don't use this issue to unnecessarily risk the timing of the project, but we preserve our rights in a fashion that protects the interests of the city.
I agree, but I do think it requires fairly expeditious determination, that we can't be in a position where we're actually transferring essentially no-cost land to the state, and then the next day filing a lawsuit to recover money. I mean, we will all look ridiculous if we get in that position. So I think it's essential that we figure out the, even if it's not a final resolution, that we figure out the contours of that resolution fairly quickly, so that we know, so that we know we're not going to be going to battle at the moment, when we should be breaking ground and celebrating and cutting ribbons together. Other discussion or comments on this item? All right, so you have, we have to force the recommended action from the city manager, as it's been modified with additional elements and conditions through the discussion this evening?
Looking for a motion? Yes, I'll move the recommended action and recommend that the city council authorize city manager to concur with the general plan at a future date. The right following issues are addressed to his and the city attorney's satisfaction, and that includes the two items that are listed here, as well as the other. And that includes the two items that are listed here, as well as the other actions taken up tonight.
Some additions or amendments to the general plan regarding the development of Lot 299.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. So move, I'll move that, make that motion, please.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Any aye opposed, the motion carries. Item fourteen is a workshop on biennial capital improvement, budget, and five-year capital improvement program.
Your staff report has several attachments that provide a lot of details and numbers about projects and about the overall size of the capital improvement program, but I want to take you up out of those weeds and sort of give you an overview and talk about some of the bigger issues that are involved in planning for and budgeting for the city's infrastructure and other capital improvements. So, tonight we're talking about both the two-year budget, or the biennial budget for capital projects, and about our five-year program. The sort of planning about the major investments that we're looking at making over that span of time. This first slide, it gives you sort of the big picture view of what the overall size of the two-year budget is. The fund balance, shown in the first box, plus the revenue shown in the second one, less the non-CIP commitments equals the available funding. The non-CIP commitments represent things like debt service and payments on leases and so on, and other obligations that are paid out but aren't dedicated to specific projects. I do have a correction on that turquoise box, that it's not just new project requests, it's also for existing projects, some additional funds that are being requested. So, all of the project requests that are being proposed and have been presented to council tonight are included in that total. And then the, those available funds are divided between those requests and the remaining balance at the end of the biennial budget period. So, page now. This table illustrates the remaining, the size of the remaining authorization, our carryover, the backlog of projects, and the size of the request over the last five years. And it's, the overall size of the capital budget has ranged between one hundred and fifty and two hundred million dollars, and I think this illustrates that, you know, in years when we have a big backlog, our request has been relatively smaller and vice versa. We've had relatively larger requests when we have a smaller backlog. One, this table sort of illustrates what we are able, the volume of projects that we're able to deliver in every fiscal year. And with one outlier, it's really hovered around thirty million dollars a year. So, that's the pipeline, these are actual expenditures going out the door. And next, I want to give you some examples of some of the things that have happened over the last couple of years, where that money's been going. These are just samples. You have, your attachment two provides some more detail about projects that have been completed over the last couple of years. These samples include the I Street Levee and the Riverwalk Extension, the inline booster pump station that improved water service and pressure in the Southport area, water main replacement projects in some of the older neighborhoods in the city, and some road rehabilitation projects that were included in the Measure K program. So, those were ones that we inherited from the previous two-year capital budget, and we completed during this period. These examples are projects that were both initiated and completed within the last two years, some more water projects and road rehabilitation projects, the main drain pump station, most of the civic center improvements, the campus across the street, including the community center and the transit center and West Capitol Avenue. So, these are examples of some of those carryover projects, so things that have been initiated in the last two-year period and that we'll be carrying forward into the next two years. So, the Tiger Grant for the goods movement improvements at the port, Sycamore Park along West Capitol Avenue, and the planned water tank to serve the Bridge District. So, this pie represents what that, those, that carryover, that backlog, how it's divided up, and it's really easy to see that the largest amount of it is the flood program. So they have almost ninety-two million dollars out of the total capital program that is authorized for spending. It doesn't mean that they're sitting on that pile of cash, it means that these are funds that have been authorized, it includes a lot of grants, some bond revenues from the flood assessment, but, and promises of money in the future, but ones where we have a contract, where we're certain about being getting reimbursed. So again, it's not necessarily money sitting in a bank. Okay, I can go back. The other, the other big project is the Bridge District, where, in fact, most of those funds are obligated, you know, so they're out, and we have the contracts that we have for construction of the infrastructure and for Tower Bridge Gateway and the Riverwalk Trail Extension. Nearly all of that money is obligated for those improvements. And the other big slice of this pie is port, is the port, and again, those are funds that are reserved and dedicated for channel deepening. There's also quite a number of grant-related funds, so that includes the Tiger Grant there. This, don't be fooled by the size of the pie, we're actually talking about something much smaller than the previous slide showed. This is the twenty-one or twenty-two million dollar request that we are proposing tonight. So, it's significantly smaller, not just relative to the previous slide and the overall size of the budget, but also relative to the size of the request of previous years, and that was illustrated on that second slide, where we're much less of a request this year. So this is where the, new money is coming in to the capital improvement budget, and the biggest slices are from assessment revenues, that's primarily for the CFDs and from the flood JPA. So, that CFD revenue has to be spent within those community facilities districts, so it's somewhat limited in how it can be applied, as is the JPA revenue, which goes directly to flood protection. The other big revenue sources are the utility fees, and that is, what's presented here is based on the premise that the utility increase rate, the rate increases will go into effect. The previous slide sort of showed that the decline in grant revenue, you know, it's a much smaller slice of the pie than we've seen in previous budgets, and that's also illustrated here. There's, you know, a lot of stories I can tell from this slide, you know, certainly showing the impact of the loss of redevelopment revenue, the, and the state's taking up some of our reserves, the increasing importance of grant revenue and state and federal funds in the overall capital program, the spike in the size of the capital program that's related primarily to the flood and port programs, and the size of the backlog that we have right now, that it has grown because of that influx of funding. We showed you that, this slide also in February when we did the update, and so we've really just, we've added the next two years onto what we showed you in February. So, this, now we can talk about what, you know, some of the requests that we're making for you in the next two years, what some of those are, this is just a sample of them. The Clarksburg Branch Trail is a five-hundred-and-sixty-million-dollar, or I'm sorry, five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar project that'll pave the trail between South River Road and just south of Linden, and then provide a bridge to connect with the high school. And this is funded by a bike and ped program grant from SACOG. The Harbor Del Monte Road Rehabilitation is, that we're squeezing the last dollars out of the capital portion of Measure K to do that, and then West Capitol Streetscape. And what we're requesting is four-point-eight million dollars over the next two years, out of what we expect to be an eight-to-twelve million dollar project, so we'll be looking for the balance of the funds. The problem with this request is that this is tied directly to the use of redevelopment tax increment on being able to bond that, and we're not, we're quite uncertain that that's actually going to be the case. So, I would say that this is probably the most vulnerable project in the requests that are before you tonight, and it's also one of the larger ones, and that's illustrated in this slide, where the bar that's sticking out there, that is entirely that, or almost entirely that four-point-eight million dollars of redevelopment bond proceeds that we'd like to dedicate to West Capitol Avenue. And, you know, the other large projects are parks, and that's the Sycamore Park and the Clarksburg Branch Lines, both of which are grant-funded. So, moving from the two-year budget to the five-year capital improvement plan and the longer span that we're looking at, don't let the size of these boxes fool you, because there's two very different scales. The upper box is in the two-to-four million dollar range, there's a lot of small projects in there, it's spread around the city, it has a lot of different purposes. The lower box represents the really big-scale projects, the twenty-to-fifty million dollar projects, and clearly flood and the port dominate, and at the bottom, the traffic and impact fees are dedicated to some large transportation improvements that are identified in regional plans and programmed in the later years of this plan. That really illustrates some uncertainty about the later years of the plan. That black, unknown-source bar at the top represents mostly transportation improvements, some big water improvement projects, and some park-related improvements, where we haven't, we don't have an identified source of funds, we're not sure going to, where that will come from. But this slide also really illustrates just the, you know, the size of the flood program and how it carries through the coming five years. So, you know, looking again at that, at that gap of those unknown funds, and, you know, how we are going to be able to fund the identified infrastructure improvements, the maintenance and state of good repair of the investments we've made over the last ten years, and, you know, continue sort of striving for the kind of improvements that we're looking for throughout the community. We've presented a few ideas here that we'd like the council to consider in thinking into the longer term, the future, about how we might be able to do that. And these ideas include looking at how the local sales tax, the capital portion of it is allocated, bringing more of the work in-house, and this doesn't necessarily grow the size of the capital budget pie, but it would help the city's general fund, in that we can dedicate staff to capital projects and spend that money here, instead of paying consultants and contractors. Looking at existing funding entities, such as community facilities districts, landscape and lighting districts, or the reclamation districts that already exist, and how those funds are being used. Establish reserves, both to protect funds, but also to use those reserves as leverage for attracting outside funding, and for assuring that we're able to maintain and replace some of the improvements that we have. Deferring big projects, and I'm certain that this will be an issue, particularly for growth-driven projects, such as South River Road Bridge, or some major water supply projects, water storage, that are really tied to the pace and volume of new growth, and that have typically in the past been financed largely by impact fees. And so, without growth, without impact fees, we also don't have the need or demand for those, so we can look at deferring them. And finally, to look, to continue to seek outside funding, to enhance our lobbying and grant writing and efforts that have been really successful, and continuing to advance projects to readiness, so that we have fundable projects that are ready to go, because those are very appealing to funders. So, that's the, of a slideshow that I have. If I can answer any questions about, you know, what we've gone through, or the issues that were raised, or about individual capital projects, and then ask the council to concur with our staff, with the staff recommendation, or provide some direction, and then we would come back with a revised biennial budget and capital improvement program, most likely on June fifteenth or July twentieth. June fifteenth, if we can do the production and make these revisions in time.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, Marine, one of the, one of the issues we've talked about in the past on capital improvement programs is going out and re-examining the costs, original budgeted amounts, and the extent that the costs are down now, cost savings, that I think our consensus was to, council would direct where those savings go, rather than just assuming that it'll stay within the project. So, can you just run through this, basically where that's accounted for, and how that discretion is left with us?
Uh-huh. Well, in two ways. One, we did do a lot of budget reductions in the February update, and so we were, you know, trying to quantify for you where, you know, where those savings were, and the new proj, the project requests that we're putting for you are just staff recommendations for where those things might go. The other, the other place to see that sort of reserve policy implemented is on your attachment three, the far-right column presents a proposed capital reserve. How that would get funded is by taking the surplus from some funds and then dedicating it to a reserve in others. And again, this is just staff recommendations, so we're looking for council guidance on this.
All right. Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple things, Marine, on the concepts, I guess I just, the in-house work, what, is that a change from what we would normally do? I mean, it seemed like we would normally, if there are things we can do, we would typically do them. So is that a change from...
It's not entirely a change, but it's more like a dedication to that ever. So, you know, for example, on the flood program right now, we have staff working on managing the right-of-way acquisition program that could have been all contracted out. We have an inspector dedicated to the, a city staff person dedicated to inspection that could have been contracted out. You know, so the, it's continuing, getting ourselves dedicated to looking for ways to bring things in-house.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. The deferring the growth-driven projects, I'm concerned about particularly the transportation ones, because I know that depending upon how long-term deferral you're talking about, because I know we have talked, you know, we've talked repeatedly up here about kind of making sure that the infrastructure is in place as we grow, so we don't experience some of the things that would be bad in the past, in terms of getting a little bit far ahead of our, you know, the growth has been further ahead of our infrastructure. And so I just want to make sure that we're not talking about a deferral that would put us back where we were a few years back, when we were struggling to try to catch up.
Mostly what we're talking about is big projects, South River Road Bridge, the Jefferson Interchange, the South River Road Interchange, lead and I-80 interchanges. These are multimillion-dollar projects that almost always require some outside funding from Caltrans and so on. What I have programmed is consistent with what's in the Metropolitan Transportation Plan and the anticipated updates of that. So, I haven't, you know, deferred them beyond this five-year window, so they're still identified as active projects, and they're on the agenda.
Okay, so they're still within the five-year plan, so they're striking distance, so to speak, if, okay.
Yeah. But they also represent that, you know, a lot of the unidentified funds.
Okay. It's a little bit off-topic, but, you know, one of the things that repeatedly comes up here at least, and I don't know if it's the right time, but I'm not sure when it is, and that is, many of the capital projects that we embark on, certainly most recently, the bids come in much lower than the... certainly most recently, the bids come in much lower than the engineer's estimate. And I, there was a point where I thought we were, well, we all were pretty excited about the fact that, you know, the bids were coming in a lot lower. We're getting a lot more bang for our buck, so to speak. And I just don't know if, and again, I say it's, I'm not sure if this is the right time, but it would seem to me that there needs to be an appropriate adjustment for what the engineers are using for that estimate if in fact even at this late stage, we're continuing to get bids much lower than what the engineers' estimates are. Then the engineers' estimates need to get updated. And I just don't know, at what point does that catch up with itself, so to speak? And I, again, I repeat that, I'm not sure if this is the right time, but I don't know when it is because if we're seeing stuff at 30% below that estimate, I think something's got to get adjusted. I mean, we're just, we're missing the mark on that.
The engineers' estimates are prepared using the most recent bid information that we have available. So for example, when we awarded the contract for Tower Bridge Gateway in September, that engineer's estimate was based on the bid we received for the Bridge District Infrastructure Contract that we awarded in July. So, you know, within that space of a couple of months, you know, they were using the best information that they have available about unit prices and labor costs and so on. And use that, applied that directly to preparing the engineer's estimate. The market is that competitive right now and volatile?
Yeah, no, I hear as well that, you know, even the ones that are bidding and are being awarded, they're not making any money. And I guess that's all relative. But I just, I'm always curious just to know what we're using as that cost, as that basis. We're still 20, 25%.
It's the most recent bid information that they have available.
Philadessa?
Thank you. You mentioned in your presentation, Maureen, that three, you had three projects listed there, including West Capital, Streetscape Improvement. And I wasn't clear, were you saying that that project in and of itself was the one that was most at risk because of redevelopment? Or were all three of them?
The projects that I would identify as most at risk because of the uncertainty of redevelopment funding are West Capital Avenue Streetscape Phase Two, the next phase, and Streetcar. Streetcar is, we have dedicated funding from the Bridge District CFDs. And beyond that, we don't. And beyond, you know, just being able to fund staff time and some minor studies over the next couple of years, there's no identified source.
Is, well, you brought up a separate question regarding your concept of looking at other funding mechanisms with the districts. I'll get back to that in a second. I want to, the West Capital Phase Two is, what's included in that funding? So, you know, I'm trying to get a gauge of priority-wise. What do we have going that we might want to?
What's the project?
Yeah, what's the actual project?
Oh, okay. The Phase Two project that we're trying to put together a funding package for is extending the Streetscape improvements from Jefferson to Poplar and possibly to Sycamore and including the roundabout at Sycamore. And the difference between those two projects is $4 million. So it's an $8 million project to get to Poplar and a $12 million project to get to Sycamore. And, you know, each of those would include a similar level of improvements is what you see here on the design that's outlined in the master plan. We have to date completed, or within the next couple of months, we will have completed the construction drawings and right-of-way acquisition for the Phase Two project. So it's teed up, it's ready to go, just needs money.
And just needs money, okay. That helps to understand. So, and then which brings me back to the, your, what you may have had in mind when you talked about exploring existing funding mechanisms. Are you, are you looking at additional assessments within those that would?
Specifically for West Capital Avenue?
Yes. Or maybe others that you?
Well, the one thing that I would, you know, as far as assessments are concerned, for West Capital Avenue, I would look at the existing landscape and lighting districts that cover the area if, you know, there's any way. And I've talked about it briefly with the finance manager. It would take increasing the assessment to provide funding, but that would probably be best used for maintenance. Another funding mechanism that has been talked about on West Capital Avenue is a P-Bid, a property or business improvement district. That's been talked about a few times. Again, I think that would be more directed towards maintenance rather than capital improvements. Where we have been looking for funding for West Capital Avenue is again looking to the Community Design Program from Secog, which they have contributed previously to the first phase. Other federal programs, a variety of federal programs that are aimed at livability, complete streets, improvements for pedestrians and bicycles and so on. And then a couple of other strategies that I could go into detail with.
You don't need to. I guess I get in the idea of, of just probably having a look at these a little more creatively should the worst-case scenario pop up. And I guess I'm kind of thinking of that in terms of, for at least the West Capital, continuing that. Because I feel like to stop that cold when everything's teed up, it's probably not in our best interest because things are moving along and it would get harder to get additional outside funding from brands. I would assume, and maybe you can comment on that. I would assume that if we're not, we can keep it going in some capacity either through a district assessment or through some other funding mechanism helps our chances to get outside funding to complete the project.
And, you know, that's, that's true at the project level and also in the larger arena. And why one of the businesses that we recommend is looking at a reserve program? Because having dedicated funding helps attract.
That's where I was getting, but thank you, Maureen. That was a good thought. Thank you.
Yeah, Maureen, the port seems to have substantial impact on the overall CIP. Why wouldn't we separate the port out completely and have the port as an independent? I mean, we have a port commission, let them run their own budget, do their own CIP, and the city do theirs. I mean, why do we combine them?
In fact, we do what you say. Both, both the port and the JPA, the Flood, the Protection JP, the West Side. Both have independent boards and they both have independent capital improvement budgets. And so we essentially, you know, take that sheet, tear that sheet out of this package and bring it in front of the port commission. And we'll take it to the JPA board respectively. The reason that it's also here in yours is because the city manages both of those funds.
No, I understand that. Well, I guess what I'm trying to get at is, where I'm trying to go is have the port be completely self-sufficient. And whatever monies they bring in, they can spend. If it's additional dollars and other kinds of things, then they have to make some, you know, budgetary commitments, just like we do. Okay, thank you.
Couple of questions. So Measure K Fund ends here in the current fiscal year or in the upcoming fiscal year?
Yes.
Why is that?
The, the capital portion of the existing half-cent sales tax, so half of that half, is dedicated towards capital programs. And we had identified a whole series of mostly road rehabilitation projects. We have, we have already obligated all of that money. So every last bid up to next April is committed to projects. On April 1st of 2013, the, that original Measure K quarter cent expires and the replacement or extension of that that was authorized by the voters in November of 2008 with Measures U and V kicks in. And those measures advised spending that quarter cent or dedicating that quarter cent to Streetcar and the Flood Program. So that's what, that's why I'm not showing any more Measure K funding for road projects, for the Measure K Program after 2013.
Yeah, but the Measure K Program just happens to be roads now. But I mean, it's over the lifetime of Measure K, the capital program has been a variety of activities. In the future, it will be a variety of activities limited to two. I mean, so why, I just want to understand why there's not a lot. I mean, the Streetcar element could be provided for operations or for capital, but it's not required that it not be for capital. And in fact, it would, it seems likely then in the first few years that we would be using that money for capital purposes. And the flood money would, same thing, right? It could be used for operations, it could be used for staffing, it could be for engineering, or it could be used for capital. But I just, I want to be sure that it still has a budget that isn't, that, that I don't have to bird dog every department director who is trying to grab five bucks out of Measure K for this to subsidize some, you know, we, it's going to stay distinct. And, and this, this mechanism has been one way at least that we've been able to say, in one place, here are Measure K disbursements. And I don't want to lose that.
You know, I'll talk with the finance director about setting up a fund. But I would actually suggest that we not call it the Measure K Fund, that we call it the Measure U and V Fund.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. So the landscaping at Harbor, the Harbor Interchange, so maybe you can help me understand the current, the 2011, 12, $350,000. We, we had that project, it came in way, 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 way under bid, I mean, under engineer's estimate. And then reallocated a good chunk of that money for the landscaping. We're still, even after all the excess that was available, we're still $350,000 short?
No, this is that $350,000.
Oh, it is? Okay, so this is not, this is not our, this is not traffic impact fee money?
This is the...
All right, is this the traffic impact? So the traffic impact fees shared in the savings from the engineer's estimate?
Yes.
So a portion of that accrued to Caltrans? There was also, some of that was put back in the budget? A portion of it accrued as traffic impact fees? That's what this is?
Yes.
Okay. I Street Bridge, I don't see anywhere on the plan other than the railings, the pedestrian railings, any other even long-term project identified for rehabilitation or repair of the I Street Bridge?
No. We may get some direction out of the Metropolitan Transportation Plan along with the schedule on that and...
Well, I want to flag it for...
The council could consider.
For when it comes back, I'm going to flag this because as we've talked about at council and at the Streetscape planning retreat, we need to get ahead, I mean, we're not ahead of it. The I Street Bridge is already a disaster. If you drive walker or put too much weight on it. And we need to at least have some sort of plan, like we do in a lot of other areas, that maybe it's 2015, 16, it's something, but something that's identified that we intend to prevent the I Street Bridge from collapsing into the river. I mean, it's, it's, it's basic maintenance repair is going to be, is a critical issue. The Arlington Oaks Neighborhood Park, which is a new project scheduled for the end, and it's in the general facilities budget, not in the park budget. What's the, where did this come from? And it can't be the only new thing in the whole park's master plan.
No, it's, this was really aimed at that portion of the, of the stone lock property that was affected by development at Westbridge and then developing a neighborhood park at that location.
Where's that?
Right by the Palma Desi Bridge, just east of there.
Okay.
This was a staff request that it get programmed within the five-year.
Is it, is it, but it doesn't, it had no funding? So it wasn't, there was no funding as a mitigation as part of that project or anything? So? And, but it's in the park's master plan?
I believe so.
And it's the only, it looks like it's the only new park in the whole, in the entire set. So I'm just, I'm trying to understand what, what makes that one special compared to all of the other needs in the community for, for new park and recreation facilities?
This is somewhat tied to redevelopment and state budget. The 3.8 acres, it did come out of the Westbridge Plaza where we relocated the 3-point acre park at the south end of Westbridge to the north, right near where the sort of a, a lane, an access lane there at the northwest corner of Arlington Oaks. And so that, that was something that was done with redevelopment and the city. And redevelopment has had that set aside as a 3.8 acre site that at some point in the future would be developed as a park by the city. And so it's a way that we wanted to make sure and secure that both in the redevelopment plans, the fighter implementation plan, and the city.
Just next to the Barge Canal?
Yeah, it's, it's right adjacent to the Arlington Oaks Neighborhood.
Yeah, okay.
But it's on that strip of Barge Canal property.
Okay, I think I understand the tactic here. I mean, I just want to, for me, this is not, I mean, if we, we just had to pick what, of all the undone parks in the city, where would we go next? I don't, given that we just invested a lot of money in the Barge Canal access, I'm not sure this would be at the top of my list. I think I understand what you're saying about the redevelopment issue, so I will stop talking about it. But on the Streetcar? So, you know, starting in April 2013, we'll start to have that portion of revenues from Measure U and V. But we, so there's some, but we don't, is that incorporated or accounted for in any way here? We obviously won't be spending on operations that year or a couple of years after.
It isn't. And we could do that. We could program that in.
The part of my question is about, is strategic because the projects all make sense. And, and part of this is, you know, is West Capital Streetscape Phase Four more likely, more important than, you know, one of the bridges, for example? And I'm not, personally, I'm not sure that it is. I mean, if we were to be able to complete West Cap Streetscape Phase Two all the way to Sycamore, I would be personally, and we haven't talked about this, I would personally be quite happy with the state of public investment in West Capital Avenue for the period of this five-year plan. And so thinking about three, phases three and four as being, you know, the next $19 million of priorities probably would not be mine. There are other, there are other needs in here, including potentially getting ahead of some of these, of the growth-related projects. But definitely some of the, you know, the Jefferson 50 interchange, the bridges, the bridge projects at more than $50,000 just to keep, keep the planning process alive is more important to me. So just in terms of those, those projects, I would rather start making some, some, if we had that money, I would rather make more investments in, in some of those projects than in phases three and four on West Capital. On Streetcar itself, I mean, I know part of the thing we got dinged on and from the, from FDA, from our last application was, you know, how certain is your, how certain is the money that we've described? And it's pretty, it was pretty darn certain then. But, I mean, there, to the extent that there's a difference between having the budget appropriation for the project and having our concurrence for a long-term CIP allocation, if it matters even a small bit to move it into 2012, 2013, to move a portion of that into 2012, 2013 and move a portion of the Streetscape to 2013, 14, I would do it just as a, as a strategic, as a strategic issue so that we can, we can actually say in our, in our Tiger III application, we had, the council, that it's not just part of a long-term plan, the council has appropriated money in the budget for the Streetcar project. Now, we can come back, you know, six months or nine months from now and reappropriate it if we're not successful getting the grant. But both of those projects are contingent on significant outside funding. And if it was strength in our application, I think it's worth pursuing, pursuing that. Because we're going to have a hard time on the Streetscape. I mean, it's a great project. We did great on this project, on the one that we've already done. It's popular, you know, I, I mean, the staff all knows. I mean, at Secog, it's, I mean, it's not a running joke, but it certainly is, I'm constantly reminded that we have, of a pot of money that was allocated for 22 cities and six counties in the last two funding rounds that we've, we've taken a majority of all of the money for all, for all 28 cities and counties in the, in the region. Although it's merit-based and it's review, there's definitely, there are going to be a bias against us capturing another eight or 10 or 12 million dollars of that money again. And frankly, other jurisdictions are getting smarter about what to, what to propose and what to, and they're looking at what we've done and said, we want to do the same thing. And they're going to be more competitive too. So I just don't want to put all of our eggs into the, into Streetscape basket. It's a great project, we're super proud of it, it's making a huge difference. But we have some other key priorities as well. We want to make sure that they're just as competitive and that we're aligning the strategy to make them successful. So I don't have any problem with any of the content, but I would suggest that you take a look at, on the line, which things are in the budget and which things are in the plan to think about what would make our, our... are in the plan, to think about what would make our, our, our competitive applications as strong as possible.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, I would concur with Mayor on that, in terms of the Streetcar and to improve our visibility of that project and our CIP. Now, on the Jefferson 50, is, this is just planning money?
Yes.
It's being pushed out?
Oh, um, what we have programmed, you, you received a, a new attachment for that sort of helped lay out that, that your plan. The, yes, this is primarily planning and design money, yeah.
Yeah, one of the things is that intersection is just looking really ratty. You know, one of the things I'd like to see, you know, the planning is really, it's just the reconfiguration, we had this discussion, what was it, three or four years ago, it's been a while, on the readjustment of that entire intersection, but in the interim, until that happens, is, is part of that planning landscaping, or, you know, I mean, what can we do about that intersection now? Because there's trash, and, you know, weeds, and, and, you know, all kinds of vegetation that's out of control, and it's kind of the entry to the city, similar to, I mean, I Street's a, some type of thing, but-
Um, I, you know, I know, I know that our urban forestry manager's been talking with Caltrans about improving maintenance there, and ways that we can do that. And as far as capital improvements within the Caltrans right-of-way, you know, we, we need to work with them on that. But looking at capital investments that we can do within the city-owned right-of-way, I think there are some projects that we could do that we could do that. Although it, it seems like maybe what you're addressing is more maintenance issues.
Well, yeah, I, I think that's pretty much it. I mean, if you drive through there, you'll see that in the median between the two lanes there's, you know, suckers growing, which is, it's kind of out of control, and it doesn't look very nice. And I know we're landscaping Harbor and, and other areas of entrance points into town. I mean, I don't, I don't know what the cost of that would be, obviously there's going to be an expense to that, but we may want to take a look at what that would mean, if it's just a maintenance issue or there are actually some hard, hard costs we're going to.
Other comments? For initial directional, make, take your final action tonight. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, that brings us to council calendar. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of events that are coming up on the 7th of June, the Riverwalk Concert Series will return, and that's going to be every Tuesday. Then on the Saturday, the 11th of June, we'll have the Station 45 Open House at the Fremont Station, Station 44 Open House, I'm sorry. And then the, on the following Saturday, their Law Dogs, which will be a canine competition, will be taking place at River City High School, which should be a pretty fun competition for the public to, to see.
All right, questions on the calendar?
Just a question, you said the Riverwalk Concert Series starts on the 7th, and it's every Tuesday? Okay, so it's, it's not similar, it's-
There actually are only two scheduled.
Okay, got it.
Depending on how they go, there will be, there may be others scheduled.
Okay, Mr. City Manager reports?
Just one item, we open tomorrow the bids for the two, two portions of the Levy Project in the north, and we're very hopeful that we'll be able to award shortly.
Questions for the City Manager? City Attorney report? Staff, Director, members of the council?
Earlier, we mentioned the mayor did the, this repair of I Street Bridge, is there a possibility we can contact either UP or Caltrans, I guess it's BUP? There are some potholes that have gotten bigger and bigger, and now it's becoming a real hazard. Cars are trying to swerve to avoid them, because they're getting deeper, so it's pretty da, it's getting pretty dangerous, and you'll find them mostly at the, sort of the western edge of the bridge there.
Okay. I, I didn't mention this earlier, but I did want to thank staff for the, we had our annual visit of all the second graders at, all five classes of second graders from Westmore Oaks Elementary School, we're at City Hall in your chairs, so if they were lower, that's, that's why, earlier this week, and they, they came as they do each, each year to visit the chambers, hear about, learn more about city government, and also spend a lot of time with police and fire departments, and so thanks to those departments, and the city clerk's office, who did a great job of putting it together, and, and since, and Mr. Ledesma came to participate and took over the, the session with the last two classes of fifth graders, I very much appreciate it. And I don't know, the council probably not aware of this, that we just completed May's Bike Month yesterday, and region-wide, it was, it was the highest number of miles ever logged, despite the fact that it was the worst weather ever for, for the month of May. But one thing I wanted to, to highlight is that the city of West Sacramento, that the staff and others who, elected officials who affiliated with the city of West Sacramento as part of May's Bike, May's Bike Month, the city of West Sacramento per capita had the most, city government had the most, second-most number of miles logged of any city or county in the region. Davis was number one, but I think it's often underappreciated how, how, both in our community, but particularly, but our employees and city government does walk the, or bike the talk. And it was by, by a large margin, Davis and West Sacramento were ahead in terms of the commitment of the organization, city government organizations to, to biking as part of May's Bike Month. And then just one direction issue is if, I think, I'd like to get some background information on the mobile food, I'm not asking about backyard chickens, which is the other city of Sacramento obsession, but, but had a lot of inquiries about it, about mobile food operators. We don't have the half-hour ordinance that Sacramento adopted, but I'm sure there are other issues that are, that are involved. And one of the mobile food trucks is the sponsor of the Harmony on the River Summer Concerts, and there's another one that's, that does come into town, but I'd, I'd be helpful in the newsletter in some other form, we get some background about, so this, what the state of our rules are, rules and regulations are with respect to mobile food vendors.
All right, we have no future agenda item requests, so is there a motion to adjourn? Announced by Mr. Viegas, and seconded by Mr. Johansson. All those, if they would, please say aye, aye, and opposed, hearing none. Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.